Good morning. Good morning.
That's rules, isn't it?
Okay, good morning. I'm going to call the September 28th, 2021 Hancock County Commissioner's Special Meeting Order. Gentlemen, I direct your attention to the agenda and ask if there are any adjustments.
I would have moved to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of adding an item for closing county offices for Deputy Luke Gross's funeral services on Thursday, September 30th as item 2A, and removing item 12, EMA presentation on the Homeland Security Grant Program as requested by EMA Director. Thank you.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion, gentlemen? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sheriff? Item 2?
Good morning and thank you for that statement. In the early morning hours of September 23rd, 2021, Deputy Luke Gross responded to Route 3 in Trenton for the report of a vehicle off the road that had hit a pole. It was reported that the operator of the vehicle was possibly under the influence. Deputy Gross arrived and the suspect vehicle had been seen. While investigating, Deputy Groves was struck by a pickup and suffered serious injuries. Despite efforts to save Deputy Gross, he did not survive his injuries. Deputy Gross was a valuable and highly respected deputy at the sheriff's office for 18 years. Deputy Gross is survived by Lauren, his wife, for 15 years, and a son Ryan and a daughter Alyssa. Out of respect and recognition of Deputy Gross's long service today, September 28th, 2021, as sheriff of Hancock County, I am officially retiring call sign Hancock 9. No other deputy going forward will ever be assigned that call number. Someone eventually will fill Deputy Gross's spot at the sheriff's office, but no one will replace him. Thank you.
To memorialize the sheriff's retirement of Deputy Gross's call sign Hancock 509 and Hancock 9, I move to request that the county staff draft a formal resolution retiring call sign Hancock 9.
Well, noon or afternoon. I mean, 12 probably means two.
In honor of Deputy Luke Gross for consideration and formal presentation on a future county commission agenda.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Gentlemen, discussion? So by clarification, what now we'll draw up a resolution. At some point, we'll have a brief ceremony, present that resolution publicly, approve it, and present it to the staff and family. Okay?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
And thank you for all being here. It's a great tribute to him and shows what a great department he has, Sheriff.
Thank you. I do. We have great people. I want to thank you for all you've done as commissioners. I want to thank you for closing the offices out of respect for Deputy Gross. And I advise you that there will be special seating if you attend the services on Thursday. Need to direct the special seats there. Thank you for everything. Can I draw your attention to the next item on the agenda that's closing for the services on Thursday? What is your pleasure, gentlemen?
I want to move to close the Hancock County offices during the day shift hours for Deputy Luke Gross's funeral services on Thursday, September 30th, 2021.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion with regards to that? You got that written in? Just a minute. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, I would like to have a brief moment of silence and silent break. We can all stand, please. Amen and so may it be. Good, gentlemen. Thank you for your attendance here this morning, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
This time we'll have a public hearing with regards to our remote participation policy.
We've got a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. This time we'll have a public comment session. Is there anybody up there who would like to make a public comment? See any hands on the Zoom? Hearing done, and now we will move to point a session for a public hearing on Hancock County remote policy, remote meeting policy. Commissioner, what's the order of business here?
So I guess in a public hearing, you would open it up to the public to see if anyone had any comments regarding the draft policy?
Now, we've had this on our website for the public to review.
Yep.
Then I will do that. Is there any public comment with regards to the county's proposed remote meeting policy? Anything on the Zoom, Rebecca? The hearing? No public comments, gentlemen?
I do.
I'm sorry. Is there somebody there?
Yes, it's Aunt Blacy, former county commissioner. Commissioners, it's good policy. I urge you to pass it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Then I'm going to close the public hearing on a remote policy, remote participation policy. Gentlemen, what is your regards to the policy?
Move to approve and adopt the Hancock County Remote Meeting Policy as presented.
Seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. The policy is in effect. At this point... I'm wondering. I don't know.
I told them 8:45.
Pardon?
I mentioned 8:45.
8:45? So is it... I'm just wondering if we could.
Are we available?
Or we could... If you want to jump right into the budget, we could have the public hearing on the budget. That's the next item.
No, the advisory committee has to be available for that.
Oh, it does?
Yeah. I'd like to do some of the awards of the people that are here. We do have a couple recipients that are in the room today, so if we could...
Yes, Bird's Acre and Main Grid.
Okay. Good morning, Kitty.
Good morning. Commissioners, we're pleased to request from Hancock County Commissioners their official approval to award the following nonprofit organization the funding as part of the American Rescue Plan Nonprofit Grant Program for the main granite industry, Historical Society, for revenues lost due to cancellation of fundraising events in the amount of $8,660. Susan?
Don't he sign the bill?
Okay.
So I'm going to move to acknowledge an award, move to acknowledge the award of an ARP revenue loss grant to Main Granite Industry Historical Society in the amount of $8,600 as awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
$8,660.
I'm sorry. $8,660.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Congratulations. Everyone just hold back, turn around, and back right up to us. Congratulations.
Okay, Commissioners, we're pleased to request from Hancock County Commissioners their official approval to award the following nonprofit organization the listed funding as part of the American Rescue Plan Nonprofit Grant Program for a acre in the amount of $10,000. Grayson?
So I'm going to move to acknowledge the award of an ARP revenue loss grant to Bird's Acre in the amount of $10,000 as awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Grayson?
Commissioners, we are pleased to request from the Hancock County Commissioners their official approval to award the following nonprofit organization the listed amount as part of the American Rescue Plan Nonprofit Grant Program Families First Community Center in the amount of $10,000. Carrie?
I'm going to move to acknowledge the award of an ARP revenue loss grant to Families First Community Center in the amount of $10,000 as awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Aye.
Turn around and step right in front of us here. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, we are pleased to request from the Hancock County Commissioners their official approval to award the following nonprofit organization the listed funding as part of the American Rescue Plan Nonprofit Grant Program for the Deer Isle Stonington Historical Society in the amount of $10,000. Susan?
I'm going to move to acknowledge the award of an ARP revenue loss grant to Deer Isle Stonington Historical Society in the amount of $10,000 as awarded by the Grant Awards Committee.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. You pull everyone from here and step right over here. Congratulations.
I would like to, on behalf of the Main Granite Industry Historical Society, invite you all to our museum. It has a unique collection of old tools and photographs and all kinds of information. We get a lot of architects coming to the museum to look through our archives to match stone because this area was shipping stone all over the place in the 18th to early 1900s. And a lot of that stone is getting weathered and they're trying to figure out what it was, how to replace it, so we'd like to extend an invitation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And come split it right.
We do. We do have people split brands.
Yeah. Okay, at this time, is Libra on? Libra is there. We can get him. Do we have the bids?
Yes, they should be right in there.
Yeah. There's money, Libra.
Morning. Morning.
We're going to open your bids for you, buddy.
Okay. Richard's here waiting patiently.
All right, the first bid is from Jordan Equipment in Herman. And the net price after the trade-in, $16,407.28. I don't think RF2 is bidding on there. The next bid is from Door Equipment in Bangor. After $6,500 trade-in, Door's net price is $18,010. 18,010. The last bid I have is from Greenway Equipment. After $5,500 trade-in, their net price is $21,394.98. 21,394.98. So Libra, these are three different brands from three different companies, and so I suspect you want to look those over?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I got to come in and drop some stuff off for the warrant. I'll pick them up today and we'll get them back to you for the next meeting.
Very good. We won't take any action on those today.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Millen, you're...Millen's still on?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There was a bid in here for snoring rule.
I haven't...
It's not even you. It's for the county complex. So that would be Dennis.
Dennis, yeah.
Is Dennis on today?
No, I think we were intended to hold that till next week. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm going to get that back.
And note that it hasn't been...
It has not been.
No, I did. I did not.
Let's still see him. Okay.
Then...
Did Millen have some items or...
Millen, did you have some business this morning for us?
I don't have anything on the agenda, no.
Okay, that's all right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dan, let's go back to Kitty. Kitty, let's let's talk about broadband consultants. Kitty, let's, let's talk about broadband consultants.
Okay. As we reported previously, Scott and I had spoken to three different organizations regarding the broadband consultant work that we, that we think is really necessary out there. Still a lot of unknowns. Ended up talking to Casco Bay Advisors and Mission Broadband. Did request formal proposals from both of them, which I will be jumping ahead. And I think our recommendation based upon conversations that Scott and I have is with Mission Broadband and a gentleman named John Doughty of Bangor. Based upon just the final product deliverable that we'd asked for, more in-depth proposal, I think, that we received from him. All of these were great, they really were great proposals, and the gentleman had a great wealth of experience and in addition of reasonable cost, although we suspect that we don't know, we don't know at this point. So we're taking that cost as sort of a, hoping it falls in that range, but we'll see when we're able to really do a better scope of work surrounding the decision.
We end up taking action and selecting someone, what, what are they going to be the next steps?
I, I would like to get him in front of the three of you, perhaps next week if, if it will be on the agenda. Maybe ask a few brief questions, give him an opportunity to kind of give a 10,000-foot level opinion of what he sees, and then I think it's really starting to dig in and determine this. We are hearing from the towns now, so I think we're lining up requests, so, okay, they're starting to get their money, they're hearing what we're having to say, and they'll just get started as well.
Yeah, they are, they're, and some, I've had a couple, and I don't know how many more out there that have kind of started this process and have contacted us to say, you know, should we continue? Well, I mean, if you wish to continue, but we're kind of hoping that the consultant that we bring in can kind of help, you know, let's not duplicate things if you don't have to. And, yeah, I think, I think Kitty's, Kitty's nailed it. Yep, I think we bring it in for, for a quick, quick conversation, maybe gives you a little bit of overview, creates questions, and, and then we get, we get it rolling. There's a lot of, there is a lot of work to be done. They, they say the preliminary work is, is, that's not too early.
Yeah, and that's a question we continually ask because of all the moving parts here, federal, local, state of Maine, all these new organizations popping up, should we just hold back? And we've heard again and again and again that, no, get the planning part done now. That's what's going to put you in a better position to really activate that level of funding.
To activate it with, with the federal, state, federal entities?
Correct. A large part of what someone like John at Mission Broadband can do is work with these municipalities, excuse me, to help them apply for these federal grants. So it's not just about giving us a report, here's our map, go have fun. They will work municipalities and help them determine, here's how you apply, here's how you leverage your dollars, which is, I mean, we're talking a lot of money, so it, nobody has in their coffers, I don't believe, money to do this on.
That's what I thought was good about proposals, is just that, it was kind of so, you could see the, working with, working with the different entities, finding out where they're at, and not, not just, like you're saying, just mapping.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that's the preliminary work. All three indicated it, these two really emphasized it in the second round of conversation, is that we need these, you need that data, you need that mapping, you need that identification, and especially not just to secure current funding, but if things change, to determine what's served and underserved, and to help even possibly with some, you know, implementation of the rules, is there what exactly constitutes adequate coverage? So there's still, there's still a lot of the works. Yeah, yeah.
So, so you're looking for action to select them?
Approval of our selection, yes, sure, yeah.
Yeah. I take it that even two years down the road, if we unable to do anything as far as providing funding, the cost of his services would become an ARP, correct? And gentlemen, Kitty's suggestion, recommendation to us is for a vendor, $19,000 more than the competitive. Are you satisfied that she has adequate money?
No, I think it should be the other way around.
So we're looking at Mission Broadband?
Yeah.
You know, looking at Mission Broadband?
Yes.
Not Casco?
Correct.
It's the one you recommended.
Correct.
Okay. Into, wasn't it? If, as you can, as you can see, Mission Broadband is page. Okay, that makes it much easier than you're suggesting Mission Broadband not to exceed 52,000, correct?
I would, I would caution though that really a scope of work is going to determine true cost. I mean, there is a bit of discrepancy between those two, but.
Yeah, there's discrepancy between the approaches also.
Correct, exactly.
So, at this point, you're acting, you're asking for selection, not, not a budget that will be determined.
Correct.
As we perform, is my understanding.
That is, that would be our recommendation.
Ready for a motion, Mr. Chair? With your pleasure. Okay, I'm going to move to select Mission Broadband Incorporated as the county's broadband consultant as recommended. Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. So it doesn't have to be next meeting, but at some point, like meet this gentleman and listen to, listen to his presentation.
I will give him a call.
Yeah, what's more important for me is that, you know, you're ready for the presentation as opposed to specific. Very good. Because it seems pretty complicated, I, I just didn't know if we could put it together all week.
Yeah, all it is, well, I think it's just as important, but I think Kitty and I agree that you guys meet the vendor.
Yeah.
At least meet them. And again, if he just, you know, any questions, if he just gives a short background overview of what the next steps would be, and if you're all set with that, you know, five minutes, boom, okay. Yeah, because the, the conversation, you're right, it's, it's so complicated, and there are, there are many unknowns right now with the first process. My understanding is will, will be data collection.
Then let's move on to the criteria and what the county misspoke, prepay match. Refresh our memory here, Rebecca, did we move to provide this, or did we simply move to collect data on what it costs? Isn't that what we did?
Um.
Scott, do you recall?
Yeah, I think you would, you had proposed a two to one, there was some caution about that.
We didn't, we didn't, we haven't moved to do this yet.
No, 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 yeah.
Okay, so this, this form that's been provided is assisting us in getting the data from the town to see what's this program at cost at these.
Based upon who they have on staff, and although we have a census that gives us that, we'll provide that to them and let them update it, just to ensure that our data is correct or as accurate as it can be.
So gentlemen, you're looking at the criteria that we're going to give each municipality, telling them who's eligible, under what conditions they're eligible, and for what amount. Now, it's intended, at least when they put these together, would not, that the total premium paid to the employee would not exceed 3,750. So if they paid, if they paid that amount, we would pay two-thirds or 2,500. But if they paid 5,000, it would not be two to one. That's right, so it's going to, so it's going to be, the right, the right, the whole problem, idea is that it's going to be a one to two ratio, whether they did, they said to 1,000, we're just going to match two to one. Correct, correct. They do 1,000, we're going to match two to one, but if they do 5,000, we're only going to match up to 2,500.
Right, I was going to say two to one was the max.
Yeah, two to one was the, yeah.
With a cap on it.
2,500 was the max that we're going to pay not to exceed twice the amount of this value. Are they going to send this information directly to you, Kitty?
Yes.
Kitty, what's the timeframe that we're trying to get it back from?
We had to put that in the, we have a draft template, but there's no date.
Right, and I think part of the reason that it hasn't been sent out yet is because, were you going to have criteria on this? I mean, if you're going to have specific criteria on this, with regards to it, and get that specific, and that should go with the collection of debt, if you just want, simply want the number of personnel and take a action as to, I guess, as to how many of that percentage might apply after the fact, that's a different approach.
And that's what this is, this is criteria for who you can report.
Correct.
Correct, correct. So how detailed do you want that to be, then? I mean, and are you, so, and part of that too, is are you committing to the two to one?
Right, my sense is if you put that out with the initial email, they might think you've committed to it.
Exactly.
If you put out the criteria with the initial email, they might believe you've committed to it.
Somehow we need to make sure they don't understand that, but I've, I've always said that they knew it was two to one, that might affect how much they put up. That's why I was always suggesting two to one.
Right.
Because if they thought you'd only kick in 500, so they might only kick in 1,000.
So you.
If they knew it was for kicking 2,500, they might kick in, you know.
So are we asking for something different then, rather than just look at your roles and who's on the roles, are you looking at, are you interested in this?
That's what, don't submit that, you're not going to pay your people anything.
Don't bother.
Don't bother submitting, at least it's only to those people who are interested in paying, making a premium pay, they report to the right kind of employees, and that's going to be the tricky part, Kitty.
Okay.
Because already, at a time when I'm hearing on one hand, we can't find five, next thing I see is they got, say, 36 on the roster and not paid for all 36 of them. Anyways, that's going to be, that's going to be the difficult part, is who qualifies for this. And so the criteria hopefully will help.
And I haven't seen the criteria, but does it spell out the volunteer portion of this? I mean.
You don't have this?
I have seen.
I thought I saw that.
No, I, I have, we had, was a templated letter that I had started.
It, it's, I like to think it's very, it's as detailed as we can get.
Okay.
For example, part-time, any certified police officer who met the minimum criteria to enforce means law on a part-time basis was able and available to service during the eligibility period, they qualify at 1,800. Part-time firefighter, any full-time firefighter employed by the municipal or part-time active certified firefighter who was able and available to service during the eligibility period. And they got the active certified from the fire service.
Yes.
That's what they, and so, I mean, you may have people who respond at station and get the coffee ready and they return, but that's not an active certified firefighter. But what wasn't in here is part-time discipline. And I was going to wonder, simple, simple question, please, we didn't, we didn't compensate part-time employees. And I tried to mirror what the county, what the county did, so we'll see. I didn't want to go, I didn't want to exceed the level of benefit to employees doing what we, yeah, if we had part-time discipline, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now I'm concerned that they don't want the fire attend secretary, it would be second. I tried to mirror what the county, what the county did, so we'll see. I didn't want to go, I didn't want to exceed the level of benefit to employees doing what we, yeah, if we had part-time discipline, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. Now I'm concerned that they don't want the fire attend secretary. The truth of the matter is, well, look. Do we have, I, I know we haven't formally gone out and asked this question, but is there interest in this? I mean, we had two folks here who were, but are they ultimately going to be? I, I, you know, this seems like a, I don't know, I'm, I'm, a lot of effort, if there's none, if there's no interest. Problem is, we don't know. Yes. I don't want to say that we're going to do a two to one submitter applications and find out that it's just off the chart. Well, that's, that's the other side of it. Right, so, on the same token, yeah, it's a lot of work to get out, everyone is valid and find out there's only three of them that want to pay, two of them are here, you know, last meeting, and there's a third one, there's somewhere to pay. So I don't know how else other than to do this survey, that's really what this is, is a survey, who's interested. Some point Kitty's going to bring this back, you know, in a detailed form to tell us what the cost of this would be, then we'll have to decide whether or not we want. Well, that's right, and that's, that's what's bothering me about having the dollar nonsense.
Right, so why don't you just send out the criteria, and then basically a question that states, did the county consider, something effective, the county was to consider matching in, in some proportion to the municipal's contribution, would, would you be interested? Would this municipality be interested?
I had put together a template, have you seen that at all? And I think we set it aside because we were looking at the criteria, but I said one initiative being considered by the county commissioners is to survey and assess the impact of providing some sort of premium pay for employees who work between these dates. Although we are not committed, committing to this funding at this time, we are surveying municipalities to determine if it could in part be funded by Hancock County and by the municipality. Very, we're not committing, we're not committing, we just want to know if there's interest here.
I still say that, I, you know, it's, they might get involved, might not get involved, based on criteria, knowing to what extent we need. But then, I, I'm seeing both sides of this, I'm seeing more danger on one side than the other. What's the danger? Well, they take, I mean, we're going to tell them, we're going to cap this at 75, $150, that's, that's the extent of the vote.
Well, the danger, the danger, and you said it yourself, the danger is, is that you're sending out basically in a letter if you include the numbers that says you're committed to this.
That's what I'm. We make absolutely perfectly clear, this is only a survey, we're not committed to this, we might not do it at all depending on the results.
Scott, have you run the numbers on the consent, the census that you do have right now? I'm just curious if there's any ballpark number out there that might.
Yeah, there was a number that came back, and then I think I said 75% of that or something was, you know, it was two and a half trillion at that point, I believe.
But that's, are those the figures you sent out on time?
I think so.
Those figures are.
It's a little, so why ask the question?
Quite honestly, my limited knowledge, I could already take off a third of that, so, well, under a billion, keeping those numbers, but that was the point I was making earlier, that departments were screaming for help, firefighters were not reporting 30 people, they didn't, somebody, they didn't, they didn't, they didn't. Well, the other side of this is, obviously the word got out that we were thinking about this, because we had two communities show up and express. We see it the other way around, this, this was predicated upon them coming to us, wanting us to assist municipalities. We didn't set this until after, right? Yeah, but the point is, you, you like the idea of a formal solicitation or a formal ask, are you interested? So we could kind of nail down what the approximate cost would be for that county, because that's really the driving factor behind this. Yeah, but what I'm afraid of, I, I, I see your point, but I'm just, it's not going to read like that, it's going to read like, you know, the county's thinking about doing this, you know, they're going to, our intent is going to be.
Of course it is.
You know.
Of course it is, gentlemen, after the conversation and after you emphatically stated more than once of this program, and then you followed up with sending out these numbers, and you're telling me that you're going to be able to back away from that? So you have committed to that, and that's my warning that I'm giving you. I'm trying to be respectful here, but that's, I think you're, you're not thinking correctly if you're thinking that that's going to be read in a different way.
And I take offense to that, I know what I'm thinking.
Okay.
I take offense to that statement, because if you can have your opinion, if you want, I know what I'm thinking. And I'm thinking that we're going to tell them so that they can plan. And I'm thinking that we're going to tell them, so that they can plan internally how much money they wanna put up. And we basically, before we even serve them, say, we've decided to limit, you know, so, you know.
And I apologize, Jerry, you take offense to that, but my job as county administrator is not directly, individually with you, it is for the entire commission. That's, that was a question.
The three of us making a decision.
There you go.
Yeah. Well, I, I, again, I, I, I'm hesitant, because I, I'm seeing everybody's point. That's why I'm so hesitant, is I, I don't wanna miscommunicate, I don't wanna, you know, give, give anybody the possible expectation that we're gonna do this before we, you know, I like being vague, as Kitty has outlined. I like, you know, if we wanna say, you know, I don't know how.
I feel like we can still put out, but with the criteria and saying that it's a proposal that we're, that we're working on, uh, or something to that effect, without necessarily, I, I don't think it's gonna do harm necessarily by us not putting in dollar amounts. I can understand what you're saying about adding the dollar amounts. I don't think, I think we, as long as we can survey and get the information to, to find out what the full-time part, what the part-time part, and.
Whether they're willing to participate.
Yeah.
Well, so you, do you still think it's okay to tell them that we will put two dollars in for every dollar we raise for this employee?
Well. Just trying to make sure you're right then. See, in the end, we're gonna make a decision, it's gonna have a dollar associated with it, so they, they're not gonna be able to, we're not committing to a dollar.
So if we tell them we're contemplating a match, how much are we gonna put up?
Yeah.
Without telling them what the match is, they say, oh, I'll put up, uh, five thousand. You'll match five thousand, and, oh, of course not. But we don't say that. But if we say two-to-one, and we don't tell them what the limit is, they go, Jesus, we'll, I'll put up twenty-five hundred, five grand, and seventy-five hundred?
Yes.
That's gone over, what we had tentatively said. So I don't know how you survey them and get an accurate, you know, because if you bet, that if we come back later and have a number that we agree upon, or a max that exceeds what the town considered, when they get actually time to apply, there's gonna be more people applying, and it's gonna drive the cost of this. I'm trying to get an accurate estimation of cost before we even decide to get into this program. And I don't know how else to do it, but I'm telling them exactly what the amount is, what the match is, what the limits are, and.
So, when you say the limits, that maybe we wanna set a total limit.
And the total limit, I think, because, because of what we did, we, our total limit for our employees was three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And I gotta tell you, I can't believe that any of us sitting here today wants to give municipality more than three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars.
No, I'm talking about the overall cost.
Yeah, I know, uh, so.
Yeah.
You know, to reach that overall cost, you've gotta figure out what your limit's gonna be for employees, so. I'm just saying that if we don't give them enough information to get accurate information back, then we could end up this estimating, this would go across this.
Do we have any idea what other counties are doing?
Um, they're.
Or how they're going about it.
Right. Scott, Scotty had provided a transcript of a conference call that where people were starting to spend money. I don't remember that that was really a big piece of that. And, you know, broadband was considered, a lot of people are holding back, I think, wanting to, we're gonna take the wait-and-see approach on spending any money. Um, I, I'd have to relook at that to tell you.
Yeah, 'cause what I'm, you know, I see the sense of getting this out there, I see the reason to get it out there. I also see the wait-and-see approach, because, you know, if we can really accomplish an infrastructure needs here, then this falls, falls down the list for me. Uh, but.
Yeah, we're, tell Susan LaSalle that Glenn Moosian is falling down her arrogant system.
No, I, I, I get it, I, I.
This was precipitated upon their.
And she has followed up already.
She had. Yeah. So Bill, explain again what your concern is, if, if we don't have, uh, a dollar amount attached to it, and what will be sold if you don't have it, ratios?
Two things. First of all, without them knowing, sometimes may not have any interest thinking we're talking to a lot of some towns, believing that the match would be fifty-fifty, and I'll raise the total amount, and thinking we'll match it, you know, fifty-fifty. This, it's just, what are they, you know, having enough information, what are, what conclusions are they drawing improperly when they give us these numbers? And how, and how accurate can we believe these numbers are if they didn't have enough information to accurately report? So, I just, I know what you're saying, but I just.
You said, uh, the civil side has already communicated?
Yeah.
Just so that, you know, what is that, just, you know, to bring that out?
Yeah, just wondering what, you know, where we're at with this, that sort of.
Didn't throw any proposal out?
No.
A tough one, but you, I mean, we gotta decide something if we're gonna get this out. I, I see both sides of this, I'm just struggling, but I hate to commit to this, because I, I think, once we put it on paper, we are somewhat committed.
I don't know. I mean, I, I, like you said, both points are valid. I think you could write a letter that clearly states that you're doing a survey with the dollar amounts in there. And it's content, it's, it's still gonna be contentious upon, and that'll assist the cost to see what we can do.
And I think that, right, and that explanation could, could say things like, we don't wanna exceed a certain amount of money, because we're sending money back to your community in my broadband, and we wanna spend that on other priorities. So, there's gonna be a limit to how much, and this is a survey, this is not a contract, this is not a promise. This is simply asking you, that if we add this program, what would your involvement be to what extent?
It's not a commitment from them, and it's not a commitment.
Right, you're not committing, you're not even committing, because we could even say that, you don't need to go to the commission to appeal your resumption and get formal approval for how much you're gonna raise for this, just give, you know. So anyways, I just don't know how you're gonna get accurate certified, because once we do take actions and say, we're going to implement a program, it's gotta be based upon good reliable data we got beforehand. We don't get enough information out, we don't get enough, right information. And we, we still have the option of doing nothing, John, we still can say, you know, so I think we should send it out, uh, with the dollar amounts in it. But obviously with it, the letter clearly states.
So, an email with lots of bold, a lot of strong language saying, this is not a commitment, using the word we just talked about, so. And then attached, here is the criteria that we would be using, but again, this is not a commitment, this is for the purposes of the survey.
Well, here's the criteria that we're considering.
And I think John's right, I think we probably should add part-time dispatch. It just looks strange, it's like you don't consider dispatches, but we're just trying to, with compensating the municipality.
Um, so full-time or part-time public safety dispatch?
Yeah.
So, how about if I rework the email, just make that one change here, get a vote back to you for discussion next week? That gets it out, if it's approved out by the first of October?
Yeah, yeah, and you, you will feel like it's too early to consider, you know, an ultimate cap of all this.
No, 'cause I don't think you can cap, I don't think you can without more information, just, we put a cap, it's too high. You know what I mean?
Oh, I know. Yeah.
Right now, we're not committing anything.
Are we gonna, um, give a deadline, I mean, if someone replies eight months from now, and we've already budgeted a certain amount of money?
Yeah.
I don't think it's gonna take that long, certainly, once they figure out what the employees are eligible for. I, I do see in that, and I was looking right, but it says in here that the total benefit here in this valley municipal employee cannot exceed three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars if you want to participate, you can pay whatever amount you want, if you pay five grand, I'm not paying anything. So it's not two, two-to-one, up to a certain amount. It's two-to-one, as long as the benefit didn't exceed three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. If you have misspelled it out there, they wanna pay five, six, seven thousand dollars in premium pay to their employees, they don't need it.
Well, you know, one of the things here is, most, or a lot of municipalities are in their middle of their budget cycle, and, or some, some of them are sort of finished their budget cycles. So, you know, that's the only way we can gauge interest, is if they budget money to this, 'cause if they.
Don't they, yeah, they're ARP, they don't budget to the ARP.
Oh, that's. They're gonna be using, okay, yeah.
But you have, I don't have to, but I mean, why would you budget money for ARP?
But that, that's up to their budgets, um, well, but they can spend it, 'cause it's great.
It's a scare match, so, see, issues, we'll be careful.
Yeah, and I think, you know, their, their, their funds are, are much more limited. And, you know, they're waiting, they're doing the wait-and-see, because they don't, you know, all legislation's not there to enable them to do some of the projects they're considering. That's the other side of this.
Second, the other, so. Decision.
I guess, you know, all we can do is, oh, I, I, I'm not that comfortable with this, but I.
I'm gonna have to backhand it up, so we can, uh, talk about it at the beginning of December. Whatever, maybe, that's.
Surveys, returns.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, so as we get it like a week before that, so that we can talk about it at the, that first, I would be.
The last Friday in October, the deadline.
Yeah.
Yeah. See what that looks like, see if that can be, can be analyzed, and some, or you can report back to us, so, so I mean, do.
That's the second?
Just a second.
Yeah.
What's the last Friday in October? Twenty-ninth.
One of them.
This one will give you a lot of time, but you, it's not like you can do it all Friday.
That's right.
That's right, you can be analyzing as you get it.
That's right. You should, and this is a quick look up those numbers and send them back.
So, John, under the exception of adding.
I'm just so afraid of what we're gonna get back, just so.
See, I, I'm hoping it's, it's, whenever we get back, it's, it's accurate, we need, so when we make a decision, once we make a decision, we move, we implement this program, we are stuck. You can't pay half the employee, uh, half the municipalities, and not the other, that's, that's the fear, so we need to know.
What if we ever had two municipalities take care, take advantage of this, we, but, who the others are gonna cry foul?
Why would they? They didn't submit. We have, we have this one. We've got the other.
Just trying to figure out how it'd be fair to, you know, I don't have the answer.
But we have a criteria in front of us, and I think one thing we can agree upon, it should be full and part-time. Public dispatch workers. Reluctantly, gentlemen, can you agree that we don't have to put out the limits and the match, to get accurate information back? John, I find that, yeah.
Just two of us, so I think we're gonna move forward.
Okay, then I'm going to move that we adopt the criteria for the premium pay match for municipalities as presented with the amendment to two part-time public safety dispatch workers. Get that to municipalities, they'll respond by October twenty.
Yep. But you wanna see the email first. I'm gonna redo the email that goes with the criteria.
You know exactly what we're gonna get.
I know what you're looking at.
There'll be a, we want, there'll be any question in that moment, that this is simply a survey, or simply interesting, what do you think? I don't care how you put that forward.
Okay, I'll say, call commission clerk if you have any questions.
How about proposed criteria? Yeah, I, I, I'm afraid that most.
Didn't I say proposed, the test proposed?
Oh, yeah, you did.
I just said proposed. And, was it, was it the twenty-fifth Friday, was it twenty-fifth, twenty-eight?
Um, I think it was twenty, twenty-nine, right?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine.
And hopefully we'll get a response back by November second. So, so my only, just a second, I got a motion on the floor.
A second?
And it's been a second, a discussion, go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanna be clear that this vote would not be a proven criteria, it's just a proven criteria that goes in the letter.
It's the same thing. This is the criteria we're gonna send the municipalities in order to, oh, I see, in other words, we could amend this criteria later, as far as who gets what?
Yeah.
Okay, right. This criteria, for the record, this criteria is simply the criteria we're gonna use to survey municipalities. We may modify the criteria when we, and a good example is, is that, depending on that, we may reduce that match to fifty-fifty. I don't know. All right. John? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All, it's unanimous, the motion carries. And somebody's gonna send the criteria, Kitty, I, I, I'm in Canada.
I gave her a hard copy, right, just today, I did, I'll make sure you, let's try to keep.
Okay, is there anything else you have to say?
Um, just real quickly, we do have three more grant applications, um, in process.
Great.
So they are still coming in.
Good.
Received another one yesterday.
I'm concerned that.
It was drying up, I think the words getting out, actually.
I remember Paul made the comment that we're gonna, we're gonna eat right through this in a hurry.
Yeah.
At one point, looked like it stopped, so.
Well, we, yeah, we're.
I'm wondering why it took people so long to, is it we're not getting out, Kitty?
Well, I mean, I'm hearing, um, I wait, still waiting for the grant application, and like, okay, go to the front page. So, there may be some of that, um, and I just think it's communication, I mean, I never knew there was a historical granted society. Right? I mean, it's interesting, it's, um, so.
Okay, very good.
All right, also, um, real quickly, we had thirty-nine comments on our public site so far, I've started going through those. That's from the Hancock County website. Um, anything that's broadband related, I have responded to and said, this is a huge priority for commissioners. We are acting on this, so you will hear more information as proceeds. Um, and then I'm starting to go through the individual ones, and I may reach out to you individually, to your county, for very specific things. What that comes to mind, I think there's a park sport issue with water sewer led, something, then maybe I'll reach out to you and have a discussion, and see if we should follow up on it. Some of them are just not gonna be eligible, um, based on criteria and all responsibility as well. But I wanna make sure that each of those are being responded to, or brought forward for further discussion.
Are those, if those are updated, are those going on to, like, our servers, or, I'm just curious?
We can make that happen. We can make that happen. I.
I just want to be.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it's, we have those, you have those in our spreadsheet. I do, right? Yeah, I'll just give it to you when you get maybe the free.
Because we're about a little more than a third through the, we allocated to the
The grant.
For the grant program.
Um, for example, there's a a one we've received several of over the last two weeks about uh is it PDC problem in Franklin in the water? Are you aware of that? And there's several people banding together to want to have something done. So that would be a good, you know, for me to have a conversation with you and kind of say, okay, is it something we should kind of dig into a bit more and then bring it back as as a proposal.
Yeah, again, we have to keep our eye on the, you know, there's pending legislation on, you know, what this can be used for. We don't know what what it is yet, you know, we certainly wouldn't want to.
Look, for me, that's the problem, though, and there's some things that are very clear.
Water sewer.
Water sewer, broadband, those are very clear. And for us to focus on those and find out if there's something else that we would have prioritized that just didn't seem fit now the way they did, we spent all our money. That's 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 my concern.
Yeah. That's exactly what.
But you know, here's a case in Franklin. Where do you want to spend your proportional share in premium pay? Do you want to fix your water system in the evening?
I think really all they're asking is for free water testing for anybody who wants it. That sort of thing. But a-again, there's just these individual ones that are coming up that, you know, easily might fall into the criteria that maybe we should just have a brief discussion on the table.
So that kind of know that the head of the website, you know, where people are able to put in comment and stuff. Kind of wonder if we need to do more of a public hearing in in the evening or something, so that.
ARD computer.
Yeah, here. Um, and obviously that is a little more open and just to make sure that we're making sure everybody knows what we're working on, unless we're open to ideas. Just find it on the website. Excellent. I have another website. And they might from articles that have happened in two separate, I think that's good, you know, to direct us there. But maybe, I don't think it's a bad idea with this amount of money. They don't have time. We're going to be working on it to do a meeting. There would be at a different time, maybe a little bit more of a public meeting. Uh, it's just about the ideas. I don't know, might get some interest and get some uh ideas. It's just, I don't know what, how do you, how do you think about that? Well. Yeah. I'd like to think that you're getting exposure. It's just like making these public presentations, getting, you know.
Sure.
I guess what the earth thinks me is that you can't, you can't please everybody. I mean, you were criticizing for running right out of stat, spending their money we couldn't, we couldn't spend. You know what I mean? I thought it would be good to get some, a few bucks out soon.
Yeah.
And I I thought we'd be improved. So. But anyways. Uh, it's just a thought. Well, a lot of, a lot of, you saw Scott survey different candidates, while we're not having public hearings, so it would be.
Scott and I have also talked about doing the same sort of thing, even if it's via some municipalities, because, you know, God bless them, but they seem to be stuck in their own world too and not, well, I I mean, I'm here for municipalities who are like, no, nothing of these funds, how do I apply? Right? I mean, to, hey, Kitty, just got our money, want to have that meeting, right? So there's a huge, you know, lack of communication. They don't know how to sign up, which was, we all know, was cumbersome at best. So we talked about maybe a Zoomy municipalities. They kind of can lay out this all in very general terms about, here's what we're looking at, you know? We're not committing, but the things we're looking at might be, you know, premium pay or broadband, we hired a consultant that, you know, I think it opens some dialogue with them as well.
Yeah, you know, especially with Zoom, you know, I'm thinking too, that instead of evening, we we do it like one o'clock in the afternoon. Municipal officials and law.
When they're going to be.
Yeah. And so I'm I'm opposed to public hearing in the summer.
One of the things with municipal officials is that they're, they're used to meeting. And that's when they meet, most of them are watching folks that.
It's getting, yeah, it's totally.
Yeah, and monitoring what we're doing is not better than that, because that way they're, you know, they're putting it on paper or putting it in a, in a forum that's you know, that you can, yeah.
So let's have the discussion again another day, because I got to get going with my nine o'clock budget hearing.
Yes, it's.
Because because we have reached out to them.
Yes.
Yeah.
Kitty, thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
Gentlemen, back to your agenda, item seven, public hearing on county budget.
The public.
Well, maybe. Maybe, no, it could be.
Oh, oh, there are some, like, yay.
Well, I don't see. I don't see one of the EAC members.
No, I'm surprised because I, Scott didn't tell us.
Yeah. I think most of them are looking for the six o'clock.
Organization.
Is that going to be that organization meeting in six o'clock instead?
Yeah.
Yeah. I wonder, Jordan is on that. She said something about she'd be on Zoom Tuesday, thinking that was.
Oh, we should make sure.
No, I mean, so I don't know. Um, anyways, I am going to stats public hearing. I'm moving that up to public hearing at this moment. And, uh, Scott, how do we, how do we try to address issues that come up after? For example, one issue for two thousand twenty-two that we didn't know about two weeks ago, obviously, was we're going to have to raise a certain amount of money in survivors benefits. And so that's going to have to be in the budget for twenty-two. We know what that figure is, and so how do we incorporate that in the twenty-two budget? Now? I mean, after we've, after we've gone this path, how do we do that?
Um, I would, I would recommend probably in the VAC process, let them, let them know that this needs to be.
Should we get them to?
We're, we're all kind of in agreement that needs to be put in there. I mean, the other option is, is you, you don't put it in there this year and you draw off of a designated fund or the fund balance, but yeah, if you're going to, if you want to add it to the budget, I think the best chance is VAC.
Yeah, we've had our review.
Right.
And to me, that, that the the next step is to give it to the VAC where, you know, it's amendment added to or subtracted to and things that come up or dealt with, and then when it comes back to, you know, to us to finally, you know, put it in place, then that's what we, but we can't, we can't go back um at this point, you know.
Well, that'd be so impractical, I would think, if we want to try to amend this document today, right?
Yeah, we can't. My.
Yeah, I I I don't think that's the practical issue with that.
Right, right. Um.
So, uh, you know, before we open a public hearing, we the administrator sort of give an overview for the public or we?
We're in the public hearing.
Uh, prior to taking comments, should we have Raiders Digest version or, I I don't know the practices, the questions.
Well, you know what was? Do what?
We do hear what the bottom line is going to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is going to be or projected.
I'm, quite honestly, I'm. Kind of surprised that we are sending this in the present form without having that again to go through in an effort to reduce the increase. And I'll tell you, um, have you seen the capitulation? Calculating, what's eleven point four three percent increase? Tell you, I I don't ever remember the county ever approving eleven point three, eleven point four. And I don't remember the commissioners that are sending a proposed budget to the VAC. So anyways, we we didn't have that meeting. We didn't take any action with regards to reducing our expenditures. So are we prepared to send this to VAC in this present form?
Well, my understanding based on the last meetings that this is what we would send uh receive back from the VAC what, you know, what their recommendations are, and then we look, you know, at ways to turn that further or, you know, whatever the case may be. I thought, I'm new to this process, but that's what I thought we outlined. I thought that's what the process that was outlined.
Well, as a principle now for me, it's easier for the three of us to come to some general consensus on how to reduce the expenditures than to have ten more people involved in to help us pay that in. So in other words, uh, if we had sent them a five cent increase and they have, they set up some arbitrary goal of four percent and they found one percent savings in there. Well, we can accept that, but if, if they've set four percent and now they're going to, on their own, cut seven percent of our, of this proposed budget, would we have done that if the three of us had done that ahead of time? I I guess my point is that are they better prepared to reduce the expenditures on the federal budgets that we have? No offense to the VAC, but the answer is no.
Well, I don't know that, but I hope so.
Well, I think it's, yeah, definitely. There's, I think the VAC is going to approach it in a pretty careful way. And, um, having an explanation right upfront that there's still concern would be helpful. That, you know, about the increase.
My concern, the concern of the increase.
We're going to be looking for ways to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I I I think that was the process.
Yeah, I mean, that's there are plenty of us that would be pretty concerned about.
Concerned about the eleven percent, you're right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um. Well, I I guess it's a whole issue to add. I mean, it's a whole point, but.
Yeah, we've been through our, you know, even if our process was flawed.
I won't say flawed, it's it's.
No, but kind of uncharacteristic.
Because, well, I mean, even since you've been here, Scott, we've, we've never sent, never sent them anything like this before. So now, having said that, we sent them, what, a five cent increase last year and they pretty much approved and sent it back.
Yes, I think it was like six or.
Six, which was, you know, which was higher than VAC's traditional amount, but they sent it back to us and said, yes, we can agree to that. So I don't think we can hold out until they've increased buttons.
Oh, I I I'm not, I I'm not looking for a rubber stamp. I I what I'm looking for is, is, you know, a process that, that you know, looks at this and says, hey, commissioners, consider this. That that's, that's how I view my process. But we are where we are, whether it was flawed or not, we don't, almost irrelevant. We are, we're here. And I think we send it to the, to the VAC as it is. Uh, and then knowing that they're going to have to have some tough uh decisions to make, and and so are we after the process.
And if if that's what we want to do, Joe, I think it would behoove us to try as much as we can to be here during deliberations.
It's helpful. It is helpful.
So. Think about this.
Yeah, especially because when there's questions.
Because the department heads are going to be here, obviously, and the interesting thing, Joe, is, is that we have pretty good general consensus from department heads on these numbers. Uh, there's only a few occasions, I think, isn't there, Scott, where there's might be a difference in, didn't a couple of them say, I I think I'll leave this and take it to the VAC? But for the most part, it's general agreement. And this year is going to show up that way. If they, at the last meeting, they agreed with us, and that's the number that we both, that Scott posed for the VAC to, and so it's, it shows that there is an agreement between department head and the commissioners on this amount, so.
And and my guesses, as, as the administrator sees things, you know, because we go through it, he's going to have recommendations or discussions with VAC too. Right? Is that how?
Yeah, it's kind of like conversations.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah.
I mean, there's very, really, there's very few spots uh in there that can reduce that substantially.
Yeah.
And I, I think, you know, the commission knew that. Uh, those are spots that might be conversations that would, if you chose not to support it, that would go back to the VAC, and there's a possibility that they might support it. What's really driving the number this year are the wage increases that we've had to do over the years. And with our coming into the play and offering an opportunity to kind of, you know, maximize potential, um, you know, a, a, a significant chunk was, was done this year in order to lay out averages for the following years. So in in essence, we, you know, the union contracts have been getting uh seven percent recently, and it has been justified by the data that we've received. Um, those numbers were not passed along to non-union until this year, halfway through the year. So that's why you're seeing a significant jump this year. Uh, however, I'm also monitoring some opportunities uh for later discussion with regards to help reduce that number that we can talk about at that time as well. And and I'll have conversations with the commissioners about that, so. Yeah.
Oh, I I think we, you know, having gone through it, I I, I I think it's, I don't like the number, but.
No.
I I I think that those are, we're being responsible and we're not kicking the can down.
Exactly. And and I think there are opportunities to, there's opportunities definitely to reduce that number. How far down? Well, the further down it goes, the fewer options you have. I mean, I have kind of in my mind, you know, a, a game plan that we could. I do have to keep an eye on one major aspect of that, and I just, I need more time with regards to more data coming in throughout the year before I could fully, you know, present that.
So, so where we are, I guess we need to hear from the public.
Public hearing. Is there anybody from the public like to make a comment with regards to the commissioners' proposed budget to the Budget Advisory Committee? Rebecca, seeing no hands raised. Joe Cooper is with us today. Joe has commented. Anything additional, Joe?
No, I appreciate.
Wednesday night, Joe?
Wednesday night at six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Uh, how are you going to do that? Going to do a culmination Zoom or what?
Thank you.
I think everybody's in person right now.
Yeah.
Coming right here?
Yeah.
Yep. Good, okay. Then, I think it's safe to say we could close the public hearing. Scott is here. Is there an analogy for sending it to them or is it just custom?
I think you need to, you need to vote on it.
You need to vote to send.
To send, yeah, this is your, this is your presentation to the VAC.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Gentlemen, what's your pleasure with regards to the proposed budget to the VAC?
I'm going to move to adopt the twenty twenty-two county budget recommended to the Budget Advisory Committee for their review.
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You have your budget, Joe. Now.
You can pick your binder up downstairs, too. Or do you want me to run down and get a toilet? Or you have the trees bring it up for me? Now, like, where are you parked? Right up here. We'll bring it up to you.
Okay, great.
So, the meeting tomorrow evening, that's just a, uh.
Organization.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, and then it's practice that commissioners attend subsequent meetings and they.
Yeah, it's really helpful.
Yeah, no presentations tomorrow night. It's just, they get together elect a chair.
Yeah.
And finalize a schedule, which I, I still need to reach out to the departments, but I'm assuming.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question. So from that meeting, we'll come to schedule the, the chair.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Gentlemen, we have a debate here in 10. It's 10 o'clock. I'm gonna take a 10-minute recess, okay? We are in recess. Somebody else did?
Yes.
Somebody else put them together?
Yeah, and I, yeah, mine was messed up, and I asked to have it. Mine didn't get it. Anyway.
We should come up to this table right. Yeah, we have Stacy's.
Um, I asked to unmute, but that doesn't mean. I unmute. They have to do it themselves.
Uh, Dan, you on this morning? Dan Buliggy.
Good morning, I'm here.
Good morning. How you doing, sir?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Great. Uh, Dan, you just here for moral support. You're gonna be testifying this morning.
I have not been asked to represent the town in that matter. Um, I didn't know if the other appeal, the Knowlton appeal, was gonna be on today's agenda, so I've just been monitoring.
Yeah, it just, Dan, you represent the town of Sullivan, correct? Is that what you said?
I represent the town of Sullivan in another, um, tax abatement appeal, uh, Knowlton. I, I have not been asked to represent the town in the, um, two appeals that are currently pending on today's agenda.
Yeah, correct, sir. Um, this is Scott Atkins, county administrator. Um, our attorney at bear had reached out to you. I think what we're looking for is some sort of, um, formalized notification that there's been a, there's been an agreement to the, uh, abatement that went to the, through Superior Court.
And that's what you're waiting for, Scott, is something in writing from the town?
Yep.
Dan had told me that, I thought Dan, I related every single email he was got, that any copy attorney flood on it. But if there's still some outstanding issues that they need to resolve, I guess we'll have to give them until your next meeting to do that. Just to keep some surface tension there for the day.
Should we call the town? I feel, here's my first, yeah, here's my first question. I don't want to proceed without some idea that.
I'll just get Tracy to give the town a call.
Yeah, that would be my suggestion, is sustain any Zoom technology.
We are, we have.
Proceed, Julie, Ed.
Yes.
I apologize, I had a general assistance emergency on another line.
Hey Stacy.
Good morning, are you available now for the hearing?
I can try, I don't, other than Bob was supposed to log into this, I'm really sorry, guys.
Did you intend to have Bob testifying this morning on behalf of the town?
Yes, I did. Well, the hearing is, the hearing is supposedly started at 10:00. It's now 10:15, if he's not available, then he's not available, that's on the town.
But he'd also want to be a witness on the other abatement hearing as well, right Stacy?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see any other way to go about this and proceed. If they're, they've been notified, we've made efforts to have them here. You know, it's fair, it's got to be fair to the applicant, the commission and to the town, but.
I don't disagree with you at all, Paul, I think it's for the commissioners to decide if you want to go forward in the absence of the town, they were notified, obviously we know if they were notified. It's certainly be appropriate to go forward, equally appropriate if you didn't, so it's entirely up to you.
Well, I'm going to go forward here at some point, just really, I mean, this is. Quite honestly, I'm a little perplexed. And that would be one of my questions, Ed, is that we have, we have documents that were submitted on behalf of the applicant and the pairs of those documents are testifying today. So to what extent we just take them at face value without being able to question them or?
Well, this is an administrative hearing, not a court hearing, where you have to have the writer of the document be here to testify as to the contents of the document. There are no rules of hearsay that prevent you from accepting the information. I think the question that you're really asking is how much weight would you want to give something that you don't have a chance to prove? You can't ask questions of a piece of faith.
Right, and that's, I guess that's my issue, is that do we take this on face value or are we making conscious decisions as to how much weight we want to give this?
You have to, you make a conscious decision as to how much weight you give that. And you might decide that the weight you're going to give it is face value, but if you have any questions, I think that those questions dog you and they're going to remain unanswered, in fact, how much weight you actually give the document.
Well, it's 18 past 10, I'm going to call the abatement hearing. James Schwartz versus the town of Sullivan, to order. And of those parties who wish to testify today, I'd like to swear you win. Stacy, did you say you're going to testify?
No, I didn't. Like I said, I didn't prepare, I believed that Bob was going to be there.
Okay, so.
We'll swear I'm in if he shows up or not.
We'll have to swear I'm in later. Pardon me, just stand, please, raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth of the matter before you today?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you have now sworn in, thank you, Stacy. By way of procedure, gentlemen, I think we can take on record that the applicant has filed a timely matter for the appeal to the county. We take for the record, the assessment by the town is 791,100. There has been a request for the abatement in the amount of 496,000. And the mass doesn't add up in the application, but it leaves a requested assessment of 295,000 or 295,100, something like that. So, Mr. Workman, so that we have some sense of the area we're talking about, I don't know where Seamus Lane is, on title land?
That is on title land.
And whereabouts is Sullivan?
That's right across from the Dollar Store Recreation Center, Sullivan. That's right next to the fire station.
Right next to the fire station, and goes clearly to the, is that still part of the river, is that the?
Technically, it's cold.
It's the cold, it's the mouth of the river?
Yes.
Okay, gentlemen, do you know where the property is we're talking about?
I know, but technically.
That's right, I just wanted to give them a general sense so they can understand what you're talking about. So, Mr. Workman, I understand that you have been appointed personal representative for Mr. Schwartz and you're able to speak on his behalf this morning, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, would you make your case this morning to us for your request for an abatement?
Well, sir, this, this abatement on this property, 23 Seamus Lane, he had an appraisal done a few years back at 295,000. The projected properties, the next door properties are roughly the same size. And that's, the valuation of that property is 405,000. So you're looking at 390,000 roughly, a difference. Now, there's other properties as well, I submitted to your, submitted to the application. And as you can see, a lot of them are assessed at different values.
What's the address of the funding property?
The funding property is, I think it's 1807.
Is that part of your?
US Highway 1.
Is that listed in your?
Yes, sir. It's listed in the application I committed with the tax map and tax middle papers.
It's one of the sparesons?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, that was the acreage valuation, it was 405,000. The total valuation is 527. On it.
Yes, map, that's 19.
Yes.
Lot 6A.
6A and 7.
And the total is what?
527. Land valuation of 405,000. As you can see on the James, right below it, two below it, 1909, land valuation 742,800. Now, there's other properties, what continue or do you want to look at?
Having trouble, what you're talking about. Let's back up again, you had the funding piece of property, what was the, what was that property?
Funding property is that 19, plus 6A and 7. Gordon, is this one you refer to?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm looking for property assessment records for that.
I don't see it in there.
It's in here.
It is, okay.
Is it in the appraisal? It's.
Oh, okay, keep going.
So, Edwin, explain the similarities between 6 and 7 and the applicant's property.
Well, on 6A and 7, you have a little wider growth, okay? You have a little less on the title water. But on 23 Seamus, which is 19 lot 9, you have a very skinny, narrow entry with a wider title area. Some of that title area is not really usable. So in my looking at this, and I've talked with quite a few people, I can't talk for them, it just seems to me, common sense wise, the valuation of the 23 Seamus, it's overvaluated compared to the other property. And that next door profit. There is other properties that kind of odd, acreage shows more acreage than what is being assessed, which is interesting. But there's also properties that have been sold. I guess we're dealing with this one for a straight.
Well, I'd like to just see the similarities on this, so we're talking about, it's very similar, and we're talking about five and a half versus five probably.
Yeah.
In, in the narrative that came with the application, they talked about the property at Seamus, the residents being unlivable?
It is, it's torn apart, Seamus is really torn apart, you can't really live in it.
I mean, does it require restoration?
It's starting to, they're starting to work on it now.
It can be restored.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, Seamus can be restored.
I feel like you may be confusing the other property, that was what they really talked about being. Not like an unhappable, that the other paper we're going to talk to this. Is that what they talked about? Yeah, this one. So the Schwartz place, Schwartz place is not the one that's under.
Right, that's a different property, that's the second one.
Is there any dispute with regards to the residential assessment?
No, I think the residential assessment's on, right on track, it's the land one that I'm more.
Well, the residential is 54 now, is that correct, for Seamus?
I've got 48.3.
And the property is 742,800?
Yes, sir.
That's correct. So we're really talking about the 742,800? So the thing that comes out to me right away, when we try to compare these two properties, it's obviously just a different, twice, more than twice the amount of of frontage between, between the two, 930 on Seamus and 408 on 1871. So to me, that's where all the pricing differences, for the most part.
Am I allowed to speak later?
Yeah, sure.
On that tidal water that we're talking about on Seamus, the only issue is the code, it's the code. When it's, when it's slow tide, that is totally exposed, there's no water in it. So it's really not a usable tidal water.
So is 6 and 7, is that deep water?
That's deep waterfrontage.
And where is that located?
That's right off, right, right to the left.
All right, okay.
You got your map. It's right to the left of the.
And is, is actually that what's the difference in?
Oh, yeah, you have a tidal water difference of about 15 to 18 feet.
I know, they both wouldn't be mud flats at low and deep at high?
Not as much, not as much, the side water will be more mud flat setting front.
Well, we can take the issue notice, gentlemen, that the unit price is consistent, $1,200, which Mr. Gringras was here, because I'd like to understand what the adjustment was. There's a $390,000 reduction in the frontage factor, why? Because both, the comp that Gordon has just given us in the applicant's property, both been adjusted, but one significantly less than the other.
But where the comp, it's not a comp, it's the, it's the assessment value of that next property, so it's not a sale comp.
It's a comparable property, it's a comparable.
Comparable to based on the assessment?
Yes, comparable based upon the, you know, it compares well, the applicant is saying, with the applicant's property, so he can be using that as why is that one, if it compares well with the applicant's property, why isn't the assessment similar? I guess that's, is that correct?
Right, that's just one.
48.3.
I've got 48.3.
48.3?
Yeah, on this.
And the property is 742,800?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
So, we're really talking about the 742,800?
So, the thing that comes out to me right away, when we try to compare these two properties, it's obviously just a different... Twice, more than twice the amount of frontage between the two. 930 on Seamus and 408 on 1871. So, to me, that's where all the pricing differences, for the most part.
Am I allowed to speak later?
Yeah, sure.
On that tidal water that we're talking about on Seamus, the only issue is the code. It's the code. When it's... When it's slow tide, that is totally exposed. There's no water in it. So, it's really not a usable tidal water.
So, is 6 and 7, is that deep water?
That's deep water frontage.
And where is that located?
That's right off, right to the left.
All right, okay.
If you look at your map, it's right to the left of the...
And is actually that what's the difference in the...
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, you have a tidal water difference of about 15 to 18 feet.
I know. They both wouldn't be mud flats at low and deep at high?
Not as much. Not as much. The side water will be more mud flat setting front.
Well, we can take the issue notice, gentlemen, that the unit price is consistent, $1,200, which Mr. Ingress was here because I'd like to understand what the adjustment was. There's a $390,000 reduction in the frontage factor. Why? Because both the comp that Gordon has just given us in the applicant's property, both been adjusted, but one significantly less than the other.
But where the comp, it's not a comp. It's the assessment value of that next property. So, it's not a sale comp.
It's a comparable property comp. It's a comparable...
Comparable to... Based on the assessment?
Yes, comparable based upon the... It compares well, the applicant is saying, with the applicant's property. So, he can be using that as... Why is that one, if it compares well with the applicant's property, why isn't the assessment similar? I guess that's... Is that correct?
Right. That's just one.
And... Missional background has indicated, though, the frontage is over twice on the applicant's property than the comp that you are listing at 06 and 07. And $1,200 a unit, that's going to add up in current. So, why is... What is unfair about the assessment for $1,200 for, I guess it's for foot, on the applicant's property if it's spare on the comp property?
Well, the way I look at it is this. You've got a lot of factors that should go in. Now, I'm not an expert. I'm not a tax guy. I don't do assessments and stuff for towns. But I look at this one. Usable use of property should be taxed on usable use. It shouldn't be taxed just because you've got footage. You just can't tax on footage. Doesn't make any sense. Common sense states, if the property is usable, how much usable space can you actually use of that property? If you have a small entrance, that should take away from the valuation. If you have a wide entrance to the road, it should add to valuation. If you have tidal water that moves in your mud flat, I would think that the valuation of that property should change with the usable area of that shorefront.
Is there some of this 930 feet that can't be used for shore problem? What makes it unusable?
Well, I would say, when you take a look at the tidal flow, that stuff that's over to the right, you can't... You can't put a boat up there sitting on it. You know, it's just too much movement.
Right. But I mean, use of it by boat is one reason to have tidal water. Aesthetics is another. And the truth of the matter is, there's a water view up there, two-thirds of the day, right?
Well, it's all a tree.
No, what I mean is, looking out from the shore, you're going to see water for two-thirds of the time because it's only mud flats. It did no water. So...
Yes, sir.
As I'm understanding, you're questioning the methodology of assigning flat rate for so many... That's contention.
That's my contention. Is that okay? You just can't have a flat rate. You have to kind of look at the property and say, okay.
Okay, one of my questions... You're basing your appeal application or the numbers in your appeal application on an appraisal that was done April 14, 2018?
That's correct. Yeah, that appraisal was done then as well. As I do believe that appraisal came in 295.
Is there... There has not been enough data?
No, there has not been enough data. And the building hasn't changed much. They've done some work, but it's not enough to carry a valuation change.
Do you have any more recent sales data than what is in that appraisal?
No, I haven't gone any further. No, I didn't submit anything anymore.
And you're not submitting anything?
Yes, sir.
The appraisal was done in that year. Do you know what purpose was it that somebody was purchasing the property?
They were refinancing it, and his mother passed away. So, they also changed hands from ownership. And they went and... It was going to be continuation of changing it to an LLC. That hasn't been all the way fully done. So, that was the idea tonight. And also be able to do renovations to the property. They had to come up with an appraisal of what it was worth so they could do renovations to it.
But they were going to borrow money for renovations, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yeah.
But it's a bank appraisal.
Right.
Do you know how much money they were contemplating, they wanted to borrow?
I'm not sure. That was before I knew them.
And you... You talked about the appraisal, or excuse me, the... Lost the map here. The neighboring property being assessed at $527.
Yes.
In total.
Yes.
Are you... Do you view that as a fair assessment?
Oh, yes. I think that's a very fair assessment for that property. That's why I used it.
Okay.
What's the number of that? Is that the old 6 we can target about? 06, 07?
That's 6A and 7. Not 6. 6 is a different law.
6A and 7, that's what I need. This one.
Okay, so therefore, you're asking... Well, we don't have an appraisal for that property. But can you tell us why you think that $527 is fair for that property, but 295, which is what you're asking for, is fair for that one? That's basically, you know, 40%.
Well, I had to come up with a starting point. That appraisal was my starting point. That's why I had to start with. That's what I had in fact, you know what I mean?
Okay.
That was a fact that I had written down, and that's what I had. The building itself on Seamus Lane is much smaller than the other one. That's why I see the valuation change of 48.3 to 122. The property itself is quite different. So, I'm looking at the building and building-wise, if you take a look at the two buildings, compare them, I would say that's a correct offset in valuation. But the property itself is the big thing. That's the big thing. And accessibility to the road, you've got only what, probably, I think it's like 50 feet wide driveway, and that's it, maybe 40?
So, you're... So, we're comparing the 742,800 to 405 in your instance?
Correct.
Do you... Do you view these as comparable? I guess my question is, you said you... 295 was what the appraisal was for the total thing. What do you allocate? What do you think that property?
I think that property, if we're going to have a... See if we can come up with an understanding. I do believe the 295 is low, but that's what I had. So, that's what I had to go by as a fact written by an appraiser. I think maybe that property is worth about $350,000.
Okay, and you base that on what?
Oh, just history of sales and history of size.
Okay, can you point to some sales?
No, I can't. I can't. I just... I follow it. You know, I follow real estate values and stuff. No, I didn't bring that in. I didn't know I'd have to. I just submitted what I submitted so you could have a basis on that idea, what's going on. I do believe I submitted also some real estate land that was up for sale and sold and what have you. I think you referred to these right towards the back.
Yes, sir.
Right out here, the last property card. Property on 6 and 7, yes, 6A and 7 at property cards. And then there should be just like a... Yep, looks like internet.
And those numbers are listings, and the number to the right is what?
I don't say that. I must have submitted to that. I didn't put it popping in. All right. Need to double check. I'm going to have it. Well, if you find it, throw that up.
While you're looking for that, I'll get back to you. The border of the property has substantial road frontage and less shore... Less than half-shore frontage compared to Seamus, which has very little road frontage, but over twice shore front. I guess... I guess my comment would be, is it road... I mean, isn't shore frontage more valuable or road frontage?
Well, that's where... That's where I... I didn't hear of... You know, I mean, the main all my life. So, I see ocean frontage as tidal water, 15 to 18 feet variation. To me, tidal water, to me, is not worth a lot of money because...
It sells like a...
I know it sells. I got you. I understand. But road frontage, I would think is more valuable because you can access the property in a wider space. You cannot, you know, other than taking a ferry, you can only access tidal water from the water.
But that philosophy wasn't expressed anywhere in the appraisal, was it?
Oh, I don't know. I didn't fully read. I just saw the total of the appraisal. I just read it up through it.
It wasn't the appraisal. Text the appraisal.
Well, it looks like just the first few pages of the appraisal. Yeah, because I only gave you the first few page fronts, just the...
Oh, this information behind this isn't part of the appraisal?
No, no, those are my allocation.
Where's the appraisal still?
Just the first two. License number or maybe the location.
Like the first four pages?
Yes. Yep.
So, these are... This wasn't supported by the appraiser?
What I showed you, no. No, this is... There's some comparables on there that they have pictures of. But the map and lot numbers I supported was what I found through the tax maps and what have you.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the only appraisal docs are, as I see it, are the front page are the first four, five pages.
I think it's four.
Just...
Oh, this is part of the...
Three.
You think so?
Four. Yeah, just these one right here.
This one right here is...
Yes, that's part of the appraisal.
Yes. Well, and we don't know what those comps are. He showed... He showed the comps, but not the... Oh, yes, it's there. It's there.
Right, and it's there.
The problem for me is that I don't have the details of how the appraisal was conducted. I mean, there are a number of factors in an appraisal that lead the appraiser to come to some conclusion. And we don't have that documentation.
Okay. Just, these are the documents. I'm sorry, that one that was provided to you.
Yeah, okay.
Those have numbers.
Yes.
Those are listing numbers, the typewritten ones.
Yes.
The handwritten numbers on the right are what?
The tax number, what's been assessed is tax.
Those are assessed?
Yes.
Okay, so your contention is that the assessed value, or what, not your contention, this is showing that with very few exceptions. Well, with one, two, three. The assessed value is darn close to the listing value.
On the three, yeah. But some, most of them are over assessed according to what this lists. Now, I haven't... Now, I have not gone back to find out if they were sold or... Well, I guess some were sold, like, because I have dates written on it.
Gordon, are you familiar with the 10% variance that comes with assessment? If you apply the 10% variance to many of those, they're spot on. Take the first one, 149, and take 16% of their assessment, add that, you get 165, which is right spot on to the... You know, so same thing true with the 350 as opposed to 384. You take a 10% variance on that, you write back up to 385. So, I guess your contention that these numbers as a disparity doesn't take into account the 10% rule. So, gentlemen, I'd like to rewind to that.
Well, there are a few exceptions.
True.
And they tend to be... I don't know where these exceptions are. I guess it would be material if the exceptions were shorefront property similar to this or not.
And these figures are the asking price. Is that correct?
Correct. Well, some of it was asking and some was sold.
We don't know the difference. We don't know which is which on this.
I'm not sure if these were all sold properties. I cannot remember how I did it. Let me look here. Oh, okay, all the ones that says closed were sold.
Closed.
Right down below the listing price of the description of it.
So, you think now because it's closed...
Yeah, those are all closed. So, these are all sold properties.
The sale price?
Yeah.
Okay, so all of these are closed at that amount?
Yes. I had to relook at it.
Do you know of these, do you know which ones are... Or I guess the question is, are you making... Are you contending that some of these are shorefront similar to this or not?
Well, without looking them all back up again, I would say it's probably all shorefront ones. Like Schoonley, Route 1, that's probably on the shore, Mariners, on the shore of Mariners, Mariners Moon Drive. I would say that they're all, without looking them all back up again, refresh my memory.
Does... I'm not sure who asked this question. I would assume it would be the town if they were here. There's an assessment ratio done for municipalities, I understand it. Do we know what that is?
It's the applicant. You wouldn't have to know that.
No.
What the sales ratio, annual sales ratio report was. Stacy, are you on with us? No, never mind. No, hold on, please.
The other thing is, is that another property, you know, if you're going to look at more properties, there is one property that was listed on... I got on that that shows land only. And it actually went up for auction, and it's a house on it. And it sold at auction at $89,000. But it's actually a house, and it's only been taxed as land. That was 7.1 acres. That's map 16, Lot 21.
And how does that compare to one?
Well, they got it taxed out $194,000 in just land with no house, right? So, they just sold the house and the land at auction for $89,000.
You're just showing that there's a...
There's a big variance in value and as in how things are being assessed and taken care of.
And then taken from...
Right, on that particular property. So, I'm just, you know, because I've got several in here to show.
So, that was the foreclosure?
Yes.
I only think that one is... Look at the map on it.
Right.
It's about as odd a configuration of a piece of land as you can get.
Yes.
It might be seven acres, but it's... Which one is it originally?
That's map 16.
Where did we find it?
I've got it. I've got it. I don't know how it ended up in the book.
We don't have a property assessment.
Actually, there should be one.
It's right after... It's right after Seamus. Well, I have the advocate's section. Trouble is, I potentially just... Trouble is, I potentially just fail reading some. John, could you, you should. It's good. What is that? It's in the applicant. It's a probably applicant section. Well, that's Jesus. Actually, this is. It's D twenty-one. This one there? I don't. Was that somebody by the applicant? Yeah, this is like, I think this is the applicant. It's all part of the front piece of the applicant. You know, really crazy, this section. It's within, right, right behind the appraisal.
Going for the history to see how long that's been taxed, like house on it. Because house looks older on it. So I'd say it's been, the house been there for a while.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure how that. How that's even all of it go to. I've been showing that there's a disparity in the assessments and the annual sale price.
Well, the big thing has been only in taxes acreage. What I'm saying is, what I'm trying to say is.
The sins of another.
Who, who legit.
The sins of another assessment on somebody else's land is not relevant. He always listed a pay as, so, you know. Fact is, he may have. Somebody else may have had a complaint.
Do we know what the? If you, I guess this is a question for our attorney. If we, um. If neither party is presenting us with the. That state ratio, and I'm sorry, I got the name that is it.
Sales ratio.
Sales ratio, is that something that we can determine somehow or not?
It might be available if we did some online research, but the commission certainly shouldn't have to do that. There should be somebody to answer that question for you.
That's, well, that's, you answered my question. Thank you.
And if nobody, if if nobody provides that, it shouldn't be something you should be looking for outside the hearing.
That's right.
So. I was going to ask Stacy if she comes on. Well, I can't find it. So I don't, I, I personally don't think it's wrong. I mean, it does show that the town. Adds some disparity in their assessment versus sales, but one sale doesn't make a market difference.
Okay, so uh, sort of, and your task is to show us that, that this uh. This uh, assessment is manifestly wrong. Can you, your digest version, can you tell us why that? Why that is?
On, you're talking on twenty seat, twenty-three seatments?
Yes.
All right. What what I'm saying is.
Other than your explanation?
Other than my explanation, I don't have facts and figures because I'm not a tax assessor. So I cannot get in there. All right. Now, if if I knew it was going to be that in depth, I thought I was just coming for a decision today. On what I submitted. So that's all I was, thought I was going to get today. I didn't know I was gonna, I was gonna have to put under a hearing and testify.
Well, that's unfortunate because basically hearings here, we have to start all over again. They call them the no one. We have to start all over again and and make a decision based upon the information given in that hearing. We don't take. Town's information and review that. So, but Gordon. The the abiding property was five twenty-seven, right?
Right.
And you felt that that was. I was in the ballpark, right?
Sure.
And. Given the fact that one has substantially more. Uh, one has substantially more shore property, the other one has substantially more road frontage too. Maybe there's a, there's a, you know, averaging factor there, right?
Right.
I guess my point is, is that, do you think five twenty-seven is a fair price for Seamus?
I think, well, you could now see, now we can compare and let's look at just land, because buildings are not comparable. The buildings, you have one twenty-two, you got forty-eight thousand, right?
But wait, just back up a minute. The assessment method for both properties was the same. So. Assessment method for the abiding property yielded five twenty-seven, they used the same assessment method for Seamus. And whatnot. Had they used some different method, five twenty-seven would have been perhaps a more favorable assessment.
Uh, I, I think, I, like I said, I think the three ninety-five, I think that's what I stated, wasn't it? It was three ninety-five, not the two ninety-five. The three, I think I said, I think that property was three ninety-five because.
Seamus?
Of the real, yeah, so because of the real estate. Okay, not just the profit, the the land, the real estate, throw that factor in. The the real estate on that building is not much. It's a garage with a. Uh, living area over. Or beside it. It's kind of weird how it's set up. So now, so you look at property wise. I do believe the property was valued at on that uh. Remember which one I got here. The property on that land, I do believe is is correct. So let's see.
Property on which one of these?
On the, on the comparable.
Six eight and seventy?
Four oh five, we're comparing four oh five.
Right.
To the seven forty.
Correct. So if you take the four oh five, I guess, saying, you know, that's what that's valued at four oh five. And I do believe the building was assessed correctly on twenty-three seatments. I think that's all of that building's worth. Forty-eight fifty thousand. Do you add that to the four oh five? Sure, four fifty, I would, you know. You want to take a look at comparable and valuation, I would say four fifty would be a good go-to number. For Seamus. I just don't like the idea that Seamus has that very small opening. That without more access to that property. Compared to, you know, the adjoining property.
I would, so, my mother's. If we look at the town's material, they says the six A seven is one of their comparables as well.
Yes.
So we should note that, that they've decided it's a comparable. Town was listening, yeah.
Yeah, they listed, uh, well, they listed six and seven, but it's actually six eight and seven.
Be looking at. The base. Six eight, so. And. And and you don't, you don't dispute that the assessment for six A and seven?
No.
Well, what I. Where I'm having trouble is, uh, again, on the town's side is, uh, I understand Mr. Workman's contentions here. Uh, I have questions on the town's comparable and their methodology, because Mr. Workman's basically saying in a few words, and again, I don't want to put words in his mouth, that. The formula used to derive those two numbers is flawed. I mean, I can't draw any other conclusion but that.
But you'll, you'll have to admit though, Gordon, that it's the same formula for projects.
Yeah, yes, he submitted.
It's just, it, yeah, okay. Gordon, do you have anything else in support of your application?
Well, these are the properties I submitted to you as comparables, uh, and and other anecdotes on, not anecdotes, uh, other. Items that I wrote down that doesn't make any sense to me how it was assessed on these other lots. But I guess we're not talking about that because you 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 very stated that, uh, one's mistakes on. So.
This, this would be more influenced by a comparable that 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 we could look at.
Yeah.
And that would have a different assessment or a lower assessment.
Right.
And these don't, these, these simply show that there's been. Some flaw in your opinion.
Right.
So again, is there anything further that you can provide in in support of your application for the abatement?
Oh, that's.
Gentlemen, have any additional questions of Mr. Workman before we go ask the town comments? Okay, Gordon, thank you. If you have a seat, we might call you back.
All right, thanks.
Stacy, are you on there with us?
Yes, yes, I, yes, I am.
Good morning. Uh, Stacy, do you have the uh? You have the annual sales. Ratio report for. Twenty? Two thousand twenty, Stacy?
I have no idea. I apologize. Our, our. Treasure has been out on a leave for two months.
Mr. Kinggrass would have had that, I think. But anyways, you don't have that available today for us, correct?
I do not.
Okay. Stacy, is there anything you want to offer in opposition to the applicant's abatement request?
Well, what I did do is, is when you guys were, were talking, is I called Bob directly. And asked him if he was going to log on, and apparently. He has had. Covid, sorry. Um. And so he didn't, he was not able to, but he stands by the the paperwork that we submitted.
He, i- is he wanting to comment on any of it?
He's not available to Stacy to comment today?
He is not available.
Well, the hearing is today.
Yeah, you need it today.
Yeah. So you, the the town, let me get this straight. The town is not submitting. Any testimony or any materials further than what was provided to us.
Correctly.
Okay.
So that should be noted.
It's June. So, uh, nothing further from the applicant. The town has nothing further, so I'm going to declare this hearing. Has been completed. We're going to end the hearing. And we will deliberate at a later date, Gordon. We like to get these done sooner than later, but it won't, deliberation won't be today. And you will be notified when that deliberation date is, so if you can. He's available. If you do Zoom, you could, you could join us on that to listen. We don't, we don't take testimony, we don't take comments during deliberation, but you can hear how our, our. Decision was made. Okay?
Right.
Hang on just a minute. Before we start a next hearing. It's anything of a way of procedure that.
Um, I'll, I'll just say that I think that you've handled this properly. The town received notification that they haven't shown up. They do have some written materials for you to consider. Um, when you do deliberate, um, just remind you that the, the applicant's burden of proof is still. A high one, demonstrating that the town is manifestly wrong. Even though the town isn't here to defend itself, you still have to evaluate whether the applicant has. Put on enough of the case to cause you to conclude that the existing assessment is manifestly wrong. Um, but I don't think the procedure that we made any steps was fine.
Gentlemen, if you can take words for. So I'm going to call to order the abatement hearing. On Main Business Retreat LLC versus the town of Sullivan. Gordon, you represent the applicant on from Main Business Retreat?
Yes, sir.
With the record reflecting, Gordon Workman is here representing the applicant. Uh, I guess we just take judicial notice that we do not have anybody testifying on behalf of the town. If that changes during the hearing, we'll acknowledge that. But uh. At this point, it appears to be only one witness. If that witness should stand, raise his hand, please. You solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and that's what the truth of the matter before you today.
Yes, sir.
I can reflect that the witness would have heard that Gordon Workman has been sworn in. The record reflects that the application from the. Advocate after denial of town to the county was time, was submitted in timely manner. That we're talking about, an assessment by the town was six hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred. There's a payment request of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand that reduces the assessment to two hundred and fifty thousand. So Gordon, would you tell us where this property is?
This property is a forty-one Shorewood Sullivan off Little Tunk. So three point five acre lot.
So is it on freshwater?
It's on freshwater.
On Little Tunk?
Yes, sir.
And the address at the end is?
Forty-one Shorewood.
And what's the tax?
Yeah, probably seven oh seven A.
Oh, seven A?
Yes, sir.
And we do have the property assessment card for seven A from.
I do have it. Could be the first one, right? Well. I bet, I, I. I saw it, I took, yeah, I took the, the, the valuation to be three, three ninety-eight, four hundred on the land, and the building of two eighty-one five.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Okay. And it's a.
For a total of six seventy-nine.
Yes.
Yes.
And this is on a one point nine acre lot?
Three point five.
Three. Three, oh, the base was three point five.
Yeah, acres three point five.
Okay, Gordon, your basis for your applicant's appeal?
Okay, the building itself is unlivable. There's no power to it. Septic systems, just junk. Pikes are junk. Place is falling, rotten. It actually, we've got an estimate for tearing down at forty grand. So the property is not worth, the building's not worth nothing.
We say that the building, that's property, the building.
Building's worth nothing. Okay, so that's, I mean, yes, is there a building there? Yes, there is. Would I live in it? No, I would not. Uh, so that's one thing. Then now, look at land. You've got three point five acres and most of it, half of it, you can use because it's uh, mostly. So that's one thing. Then now look at land. You've got 3.5 acres and most of it, half of it, you can't use because it's mostly wet water land and it's within the 100 foot setback or some lakes. You can't use that part. And it's billable only probably maybe 1.5 acre is billable higher. The other issue is you've got probably, well, okay, that's, that's my thing on the property. Comparables on those properties. If you look at them, like for instance, just on land value, you take a look at the adjoining properties.
Tell us which one we're looking at.
Hang on. Yeah, I, I'm sorry. I shouldn't say hang on, but.
I just need for, you need to give us a chance to find those.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
On, now that's lot 7A on that map, okay? You take a look at lot 65 and 3A, which is tremendous amount more property at land than that 3.5 acre. You'll see a big price difference.
All right, you gotta hold on.
Yeah.
6, 5, and 3A?
The, the best way, the best place to see it is on, on the map. And I, I've confirmed that the numbers written on the map do job with the property cards.
Problem is, is information on the grid helps us understand how the, the. Property section?
Property, yeah. Hang on, I'll say on the map that is. That's map 11, property 6, 5, and 3A. So 11, 6, 3A. 3 is not shown, but that's 222 acres.
And? That's what, what, how many?
Yeah, that's, lot 3 is not showing on that map. I don't think I do have a, let me just double check. Let me make sure.
How many acres was that?
222 acres and there's actually a $462,000 building on it.
So how does that compare to the capital property?
Well, at 222 acres, they got land value of 265, 100, building at 462, 800, with a total valuation to 727, 900. Now, yes, that's been considered as tree growth, but it takes over three, over just about maybe, well, well over half of Little Tunk home.
That's the one that's 222?
Yes, sir.
So, but we don't have a property assessment record for that, do we?
You have the tax middle page.
And what?
Tax middle page.
We don't have a?
Oh, right. No, 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 no. Uh, well, did I have?
I've been through it. I didn't see.
Who said? Or which one you, what 3 or 3A?
3. The 3s referencing?
Yeah.
I got a 3.
I got 3. Okay, 3A should be right. The next line. Yeah, the 3A is 70 acres. Yep.
Okay, so, for instance, on the map, for lot 6, for lot 5?
Yes.
You have a number written of $33,000.
Right, 47 acres, $33,000.
Okay, but when you look at the property card?
Yep.
For map 11, lot 5, you get the total value land?
Right.
Of 516, 300.
I have 1105 of 33, 33,000.
That's the base. That's not 1105, that's 115,500.
Oh, okay, I get you. I see what you're saying. Before, before you took in a tree growth.
Okay, but the total valuation of the land? You told him about 03, 11? 11, 5, just taking one at a time. 1105?
Yes.
1105. So on, on the map,
1105.
1105, you have written $33,000.
Well, that's what I have. That's what the tax middle book shows. 33,000. That's what the tax, that 33,000.
That's because of tree growth.
Right. Tree growth.
Okay, but the total, we've got to look at it prior to tree growth because your property is not in tree growth.
No.
And, okay, so the value, the, the taxable valuation of that property is 516, 300. Can we agree on that?
I don't have that page. You, you've got that page.
Yep. Does everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Okay, so let's take one other one. Let's take the next one. Which is 1106. Okay? Total land valuation is 45, 600. 485, 600. Okay, do we agree on that?
Yep.
Okay, because tree growth is, is a state program that we, that is, that's not for us to consider.
Well, it, right.
Because his? Tax amount shouldn't be, it's not comparable to non-tree. Okay, so your land valuation is 398, 400.
Right, 3.5.
Okay, we agree with that? I did skip one of his comparables here on this side.
Which was 3.
3. Now, you don't, all I have is a 3A.
Nope, uh, next page. Keep going.
That's the 91 Little Bear Road? I don't see a 3.
3, right here. Yes, that's 91 Little Bear Road.
Well, is that the page before the map I was looking at?
After.
After. Okay, that, that's the tax map. Yes, I'm talking about on your map, you have, he did, he said earlier, he didn't have that large track lane.
Oh, is that what you did?
Okay, so, so this is great. Okay, so that's the one that we?
You should have this one right here. You should, you should have this map. That's 3. You should have that map that shows 3. Okay, there's another one.
The right touch. Okay, so it's 3. This is 3 right here?
Essentially, it takes 3, 3, so over half the pond.
Okay. We have property tax card for 3A.
Yes. See, what I, where I, I was confusing 3 and 3A right prior to this.
Why, tell me what the relevance is for hearing 3. The only reason for this exercise was I was trying to put the land value to the lots. And I cannot figure out what the land value for 3A is.
You'd be on the property tax card.
Which is where?
Should have, that should be right after 1103, Little Bear.
3A, 3A, 679,000.
Yeah. Is that one you don't have or?
Okay, 3A. I'm sorry, it, it is here. What you're going to find, though, is that it's the rate, the unit price is the same. And so when you apply the unit price to the acreage, you're going to get a batting. And then it's been adjusted. I don't know why that's been adjusted, what that adjustment is, but. Well, for example, 3A, 3A before, any adjustments was 8 million dollars. It's been adjusted down to 4 million. I don't understand. 3A?
I mean 3, I think.
I mean 3, yes. Now, let me back up. 3?
Yeah.
It was 11 and a half million dollars. And they adjusted it downward by over 8 million. It's 3, 3.6 million in value. And, anyways, my point being is, is that the methodology you use for taxing was the same when you apply the unit price, but I don't know what, what the adjustment is. I don't know if that's uniform or not, I'll do it in the van. Well, I am, I, I guess I need to be shown where I'm going wrong. The land valuation for the, for the property, for the Mr. Workman is representing is 398, 400. The land valuation for the, at least the next two, 5 and 6, is 516, 300 and 45, 6 respectively. Okay? Yeah, but you're talking the difference of 3 and a half acres compared to 47 acres. That's the point.
That's the point.
That's his convention. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, my point is you've got this little tiny square property being valued at, say, $700,000 compared to, and with no buildings usable. And you've got land valuations that is remarkably low with so much acreage. I don't care if it's in tree growth or not, but that comparable property trying to tax someone for whatever just doesn't make any sense.
What doesn't make sense is because there's nobody here to explain the adjustment that was made to it. There has been an adjustment made to both of these properties. It doesn't seem to be of the same ratio. So anyways, without knowing why they were, were adjusted, we don't know whether or not both of these property owners were treated the same in failure. Well. But we don't have that information available. But I can tell you though, Paul, and looking at it when I say this, that we have to take this information. How, how would we say? This information basically is, is accurate until proved otherwise by the applicant.
Yes, it is. And, and, and without having a record, I suspect that the adjustments that you're struggling with are probably like your tree growth. And both of the parcels are in tree growth. And the adjustments are going to be different because tree growth is based on the type of trees that are growing on the properties. Hardwood is valued at a certain price per acre, softwood and extra value. So to the extent that there's an adjustment made, it may not appear tit for tat, but it's probably a result of that tree growth.
Then I do see that on, on one of his comps. The applicant's property is not in tree growth.
Right.
So just what we still see an adjustment. Well, what we're, for something, and I don't know what that adjustment is. What we're wrestling with is the adjustments prior to the tree growth.
Of course, there's XF, there's a certain number.
That XF.
So on the, yeah.
Tell me what that is.
Yes, there, there would be a base lot value. In other words, typically it's the minimum lot size required. So if the minimum lot size, for example, I don't know what it is, is 2 acres on Little Tunk Pond. And there's 3.5 acres. That 2 acres is going to have full value for whatever a house lot is. And then the remaining land is going to have a lesser value. Texas. And I don't mean, I don't mean to, uh, harm the floor here, but yes, if there were someone in the town who could explain that to you, I can only assume that that would be the explanation you would get, but we don't have that.
It's so hard to.
Well, while you're looking at that one, look at 11, 8, and 8A. That's 190 acres with a home, a home valuation, real estate, not land, a real estate of 364 and land value of 281, 500. That's 190 acres. And I don't think that's been adjusted.
Well, it's in tree growth, though.
It is?
Yes.
Lot 11A, 8, and 8A.
Right, because if you look down on your property assessment records, you'll see the computations and summary that shows the amount of acres of softwood mixed, like Ed was just saying there. So they've determined how much is softwood mixed bad wood waste. I am trying to, I don't mean to be abrupt, but the property cards are somewhat hard to read. But 8 and 8A, total land valuation prior to all that is 953, 100. Am I correct? We told him about the applicant's property? No.
No. 8, 8, 8A.
8 and 8A, that's the one you just brought up.
Yes. I don't have that property tax card.
Well, you said look at 8 and 8A.
Right, but I probably provided that. Yeah, I probably don't have, I probably left that at the, I just brought the tax map. I should probably brought that, sorry.
That's not sure property, is it? It's up on Tunkley Road.
Yeah, it's property on, on, on Big Tunk.
On Big Tunk?
Yeah, Big Tunk.
Because I see the unit price is different. So 1100, there's 1400 for applicant's property.
Big Tunk's not good. Yes, there is another adjustment. It's 16, 1600 and then you have 200.
Oh, that's a higher, that's a higher unit assessment for 8 and 8A and applicant's property. But again, it's tree growth. It'd be, or tree growth. 2.3 million? So I mean, we're, we're really not comparing. We're not giving, they're giving, there's not given comps, Gordon, that helps us truly compare one property against another.
All right, let's take a look at this one. Map 34, lot 8A. That's on Flinders Pond. That's 3.4, 4 acres. Now, there, they only show the land at 3.4 acres at 218,000. But off, now according to Google Maps, I don't drive out there to look, but there's actually a big house on that lot.
Map 34, 8A. Do we have property section, 34, 8A?
Yes, yep.
You do select the last one. Yeah, we do have one.
Now, I know that's on a tree growth, but it can't be.
No, it doesn't. No, it's 218,000.
Inflated pond is a much better pond than Little Tunk. So it's, it's a, a bigger comparable if you want to.
Well, I think, I think that's reflected, no, this will reflect. The unit price for Flinders is $1,300. The unit price for Little Tunk is 14. The unit price for Big Tunk is 60. So they're making, is, you know, if, if both tongues are considered placient?
Oh, you know, I don't know. I, I, I bet you Little Tunk because that's just a whole ground, spring bed. So I would say that.
Flinders definitely is not.
Right.
So I'm just wondering if that, the, the rate, the unit price. So again, we're talking about a piece of property on a, on a different. different water source, and apparently a different assessment, that was a different unit assessment, so.
But that's just showing pond, lake, flint pond, showing all the difference that's comparable. I mean, this piece that he has is just not worth what they're assessing, it just isn't, it just makes common sense.
Okay, so you showed, you showed a bunch of this, but what is the basis for you believing that this should be reduced by four hundred and twenty-nine thousand? Do you want objective numbers for that?
Well, you take into consideration the house hasn't been livable for quite a while.
That is a big factor, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Because the house is being assessed at.
Two eighty-one five.
Two eighty-one.
Yes, not livable. They bought the, they bought it because they're going to tear down the house, they bought the property. I do believe they bought that, purchased that property at three hundred and ten thousand with that building on it. I think it was three ten, I cannot remember the exact number.
It was in that condition when they bought it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they bought it back in sixteen?
Sixteen and seventeen.
Says here, minus sixteen.
Yeah, transferred. See, I didn't know, know the bill and change at that time. They picked up the property, I was watching over afterwards. And they showed me these properties, and I said, I said, well, let me take a peek at it, and I looked it up, I said, oh, God, you've got quick evaluations on these problems. Being older, so you should talk, talk to the town about it. And I do believe Bill did, but they told him that, well, that's just the way it is, he left it there. I brought it again.
So you, you, but you do have a, uh, another bank appraisal.
Yeah.
Dated.
Yeah.
From two thousand and eighteen for four hundred and forty thousand.
Yeah. And I'll, I would go with that, I would go with that appraisal, even though I don't think it's worth that much.
Well, so far, that's, to be frank, that's the only piece of evidence that puts a number on what we're talking about.
That's right, it is, yeah.
Albeit two years old.
Right.
Actually, three years old.
And the property is jumped in.
Well, so let's take the, just take the raw figures here, six seventy-nine minus the, the building.
Yeah.
What's that, it's just a, just a ten under four hundred thousand?
Right, and it's only.
Yeah, they had the land at three ninety-eight four hundred.
And is the appraiser put the entire property at?
The appraiser put the entire property at four forty.
Four forty?
Three years ago, three and a half years ago.
If that building can be restored, it's gotta be some batting.
Can't be restored, because it depends on, depending on the view.
I thought earlier you said it could be restored.
No, he bought it, the property owner at the time, thinking he could restore that building.
But that's can't be restored?
No.
Well, he must have made that argument to town, the additional PR, did you?
Well, he called them up, Dr. Law, phone, explained to him, but buildings and stuff is over assessed, and he said, well, that's just the way it is, so he just left it there.
Well, didn't you have, you got a, you went to the, they did request from the town?
I did.
And they didn't consider?
No, they just said, that's, uh, I've got that, you hang on, I'm better here. Uh, I do believe I have it low, well, you forgot the letter from the town, what was submitted, because I submitted to you, I know it.
Does that letter reference the building?
It referenced the property, it doesn't reference, I don't think it references the.
Building specifically?
No.
So, the appraisal, again, we don't have a complete appraisal, so it's, all we can do is infer, and that's not what we should be doing. Uh, but the appraisal just lists the total valuation.
Correct.
So that's the only con, that's the only thing that we have here that's not subjective.
Trying to find the letter from the town.
Probably didn't staple it.
I don't see it in here.
No, I, I know I submitted.
It could be right after the application, and then the denial form, and there's a letter.
I can make. And I explained when I called her, and I explained to her why I was calling to talk about the tax meeting. I can, that's all hearsay, because I don't have it written. So maybe I shouldn't bother.
So, we, we can, we can take here, so we just have to evaluate the.
Okay, well, I explained to her that the building's not worth it, the building has no water, has no power, it's falling in, foundation cracked, leaking everywhere. It's a total hazard, swamp group. The whole, whole thing.
And the problem again is, Gordon, is that if we take face value, the accuracy of this, Ed, you need to show us that it's inaccurate. It really puts you at a disadvantage, but if it's this bad, I'm really kind of surprised that somebody in the town didn't acknowledge.
Well, go, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Go ahead, I mean, I'm just, I'm curious, it sounds to me like it's, it's a mess, and to have three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty thousand dollar valuation on a house can't even be stored.
Correct.
I would stop eating the.
It's because it's on Little Tong.
So, no, they've got, they've got value on, on land, that's what's the value, so, okay.
And, and we're compelled to assume that the, that the, that evaluation is correct unless you show us that it is not.
Well, that was my question to Ed, is that basically they don't need to prove that their information is correct, as much as he needs to prove it's incorrect.
That's, that's. I asked them to go out, take a look at the property again, do a reassessment, and they said, no, we're fine, so they didn't.
So, if you, if you base, let, for a second, let's assume, presume that their assessment is correct, that's six seventy-nine nine hundred. And let's assume that the, the, the building, they have forty-one percent of the total valuation on the building, and they have fifty-nine percent of the total valuation on the land.
Same.
That means that, that six seventy-nine nine hundred is the total valuation.
Or proportional amount to land and.
Yes.
I see.
Yeah. Are you contending that that ratio is correct?
Incorrect.
It is.
Building, building itself is not worth that much money.
Is the land worth three ninety-eight?
I don't think so, you can only use half of it, you can't even use it all. Uh, it's too wet, uh, the front part is too wet towards water, and plus you have your setbacks that you can't build to. Uh, you have to move up on the property, if there is a spot on there that can be used. I've already had an engineer out, I probably should call him, I should have had him come in, but Andrew McTellik's gone out and looked at it, and he says, you, we really, you need to really look at this property, because.
But you could rebuild with existing structures.
Not without some major work.
I mean.
To the property.
Well, you just flatten it, you could rebuild, you said fifteen hundred.
You saw it, you would understand what I'm saying, it's can't be built where it is.
Really, but, but to, to be, it's a practical matter, not as, not as, as technically, you could build on it, you could spread that, correct?
Oh, okay, yes, yes, we could, we could measure, we could measure back and set those, those corners and those pins and all that good stops before we tear it down, and say, okay, this was the footprint of this old building, but where it's located, you have the septic pipes only two inches below grade. You have a septic tank that's sticking up out of the ground, because it can't go any further. It, it's, it's just not feasible.
And your evaluation, I mean, your appraisal was four forty?
Yeah, four forty, and that was a bank appraisal, because they were talking about getting a note. I won't get into that too much, I think there's too much little fig.
Too much what?
Little figuring going on with the bank. But that's besides.
Well, this is an appraisal.
Right, it is, it is, and I don't argue with it, it's appraisal of four forty.
Well, we, we know this, awfully subjective.
Yeah.
I read appraisal, because I want to sell my property, I hope he's gonna give me a site, he can reach me sport if I'm got a appeal with the town, hoping this is lower than this. So, and, and supposedly there is that much subjectivity.
Right, he got the appraisal after he bought the property.
Did, was the appraisal, he got it for himself?
No.
Or did the bank?
This is a bank appraisal, right.
Bank appraisal.
The bank, right. Was he required to get it for the bank?
I do believe so, yeah.
Because that, well, he would, he would want that appraisal as high as he could, because he'd want to be able to borrow his money against it.
But I, I understand that this is, this is an appraisal by a licensed appraisal.
Yes.
Appraiser. We have to weigh, you know, that. He says that it's worth.
And I, and I'm not arguing with that, I'm arguing that, that I think that appraisal was too high, but uh, I'm not gonna argue with that, that's what, that's the only proof I've got.
You're presenting that as evidence.
That's correct, that's the only proof I got, and that's what I think, that's what you gotta go by, I think it's less than that, because the house is not worth it.
And that appraisal is three years old?
It is, yeah, and I don't, matter of fact, probably if you got an appraisal now, they would only praise it on the profit, on the land, because the building's not worth it. But that's gonna ruin his issues of reusing.
But Gordon, right now is not a good time to get an appraisal.
Okay, exactly, I understand.
I wouldn't be bit surprised if an appraisal today would exceed them.
Oh, maybe, because.
Just the land would exceed them, I don't have the thing, you know, uh, I.
My suggestion on the property was, when I first saw it, D nine bulldozer, put urets in.
Put uret?
Yeah, put urets, that's why I said it's worth it.
Okay, Gordon, anything further in support of your application?
Should be probably, should be probably. I'm sorry.
Okay, um, has Stacy been on listening with it? Stacy, you still on there with us?
Yes.
You have any comment for, from the town's position?
I guess my concern would be if the value of it wasn't there, and a mortgage was obtained on this piece of property in two thousand and eighteen.
You want to send a comment?
I think she, I think her comment is that we have an appraisal for four hundred and forty thousand.
Stacy, I guess you're gonna have to explain your comment, what do you mean?
Well, the property must have been valued at, at at least what the appraiser thinks, because otherwise, why would, why would the bank grant a mortgage?
Well, do we know that the bank did in fact grant a mortgage on it?
I have the file, and it is recorded in the registry of deeds.
But that's not being submitted as evidence by anybody?
No.
Do we know what the appraisal, what the taxable valuation was in twenty eighteen?
Let me check, just one second.
Well, they haven't reassessed for sixteen years, so I suspect it's the same unit price. Value probably hasn't, hasn't changed.
It's not in containment in here, anywhere that I missed it.
No, I, 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 I didn't hear that, I didn't take that.
No, I did.
I looked it up, it hasn't changed, but I didn't include it.
You looked it, you've seen the twenty eighteen?
Yeah, because they have it listed on the website.
And that evaluation.
I'm pretty sure it's at, what's being on.
You know, Stacy's checking too. Uh, Ed, tell me if this is an inappropriate question for you, but have you ever seen an assessment where there's structure on a piece of property that the town is declared worthless, and there's just, there's no, there's no value at all, you ever see it zero, even though there's structure standing?
Yes.
You have?
Yes.
So that's possible?
It is, there are other things to consider, um, I don't know if this property has well, I understand it has septic system, I can't speak to it, so those are improvements to the property.
So that we're going to the building assessments, oh, for those?
Yeah.
But, but the, as you mentioned, the, uh, property probably has some grandfather rights, which has value, which would be considered the appraisal.
That's a very, very complicated question.
Yeah, well.
It may have some grandfather rights, yes.
Yeah. We don't know that, but all we can do is presume in this instance.
Because it's a property owner trying to sell it, he's got an argument.
Sure.
Gordon, tell us, this has a well and septic on, usable well and septic?
The well is usable. The septic, they used, it was used, but was it correct? No.
And, plus it'd have to be designed for the new dwelling.
Right, oh, yeah.
And it's, but it is a, it is a drilled well.
It's a drilled well.
But the twenty eighteen value with the appraisal is encompassing all those.
Yes, but you, you recall that the value in, in twenty eighteen is the same as it is today.
I do believe it was, I was trying to look it up.
I'm just gonna take judicial notice, that's probably the same value, but obviously it's irrelevant.
And, and Mr. Woodland, I'm just trying to get a ratio, you know, between the appraisal and the, and, you know, in, in twenty eighteen, that's all, that's the reason for my question. Mr. Tozer, are you, do you have that number, or?
What number?
What the valuation was in twenty eighteen?
Doesn't sound like she's able to get it, but.
I do not have what the valuation was, but I do know what the amount of the taxes were in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, but the taxes will be affected by mill rate, and we don't know if that's changed from eighteen to today, so you don't.
Correct.
You don't have the assessed value though, right?
No.
So we have no testimony on the valuation in twenty eighteen?
We do have testimony from the applicant, that he recalls seeing a document that says it's the same.
Yeah, I was hoping to get.
Yeah, I know, he's like, see something more concrete, but nevertheless.
Some evidence.
Trying to find it.
Mr. Woodland's on the hoes. He's not, I'm fiddled so.
Well, I, I wanna find it to make sure I'm correct. Because I'm under oath. Well, the commission's looking at that property tax card for the subject property, up in the upper left corner, there's some notes. I can't read the first one, it says oh seven, it looks like no change. Sixteen lot split, and with house. Eighteen, nothing, and it says four one eighteen, which tells me that's from reference, and that is the dates. And nineteen is two new houses, no charge, and C, and then twenty, twenty-one are the alarms.
And we have no idea what that means.
And where are you looking?
Upper left corner, there's a big square right under where it says forty, forty-one Shore overdrive.
That's a property tax card.
Yeah.
Eleven.
The subject property, eleven oh seven A.
It says lot is split. Seven, change the house. Do you recognize it, Ed? Okay, I'm not going to be long for that information now.
I can't, I, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't tell you when Ruth owned it, and when the date says two thirteen, two thousand and seven. The date and the valuations are the, the last aisle over, where it says total land value and total value buildings. This X out, so it would have been six, seven, nine, nine hundred, and that was in two thousand and seven.
So that hasn't changed since two thousand and seven, correct?
Uh, correct.
Yeah, acreage has.
Because it's a split?
Right, from seven something acres to three point five.
Well, and I see that, and I could sixteen and talk about split. Stacy said the total land value in buildings in oh seven is the same as it was for
Land value, that makes sense.
Twenty one.
Right, there's only one property, there's only.
But also on this, this copy that I have from two thousand and seven, it does show already that the total acreage with that value that I gave you, was for the three point five acres.
Okay, so you don't know what that means, I, no, you don't. Okay, so you don't know what that means. No, you don't have a tax assessment record in front of you, Stacy?
No.
Gentlemen, any further questions with regards to the applicant or the town? Then I'm going to declare that this abatement hearing is ended. Again, Gordon, we will set a date for deliberation on this. You'll be notified when that is. We don't want to be taking any testimony. We're just able to listen to the basis for our deliberation. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Hi, Stacy. You don't need nothing else from me?
No.
Good deal.
Thank you. Have a good day.
So we're no longer in the hearing. So Ed, uh.
Gordon, we. Gordon may want to stick around just in case.
Well, I'm just getting some general guidance.
Oh, yeah, but it might be.
As we understand, I guess our job here, first of all, is to try to make a determination of whether or not it's manifestly wrong.
Correct.
If it is, then we gotta try to determine true value and what the value should be.
Correct.
And we were talking about this morning, just generally whatnot. It's almost like you've got to get a ballpark figure of true value before you determine whether or not it's manifestly wrong. Because without knowing, having some sense of what's the true value, you can't tell what if it is manifestly wrong.
I think what you're describing is the applicant's burden of proof, which is fairly high. They have to demonstrate to you through their exhibits or their testimony that the valuation of this property is too high. And as you know, typically that's done by way of an appraisal, if you will. Just the, the testimony that they heard was really comparing under assessments as opposed to recent sales of properties that might show about three point five acres on a pond might be worth. And drawing those comparisons that gets to the subjective nature of an appraisal because you gotta adjust for this or adjust for that. This was a three acre parcel or a five acre parcel on a different pond.
But is that the process we use to determine just value?
That, that is the process that the applicant, somebody seeking an abatement, would typically use. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not diminishing this applicant's presentation. It is, it is, it is. But typically you would, you would come armed with an appraisal that shows sales of comparisons or ten numbers of property, lease rates, things like that in the city. So, um, your job is, is to determine first and foremost whether an applicant has carried the burden of demonstrating to you that the assessed value is manifestly wrong. In order to do that, they have to propose to you and support, um, what would be your conclusion that based on the evidence, we believe the value is X and not Y. There's a manifest difference between those two.
So is it possible, Ed, that we accepted the evidence from the applicant that the assessment is much too high? And to the point of where it was manifestly wrong, then we would use other information to determine the true value after that? Or do we take the information given to us by the applicant to determine the true value?
You would take the information presented by the applicant at this hearing, presented to you in writing and testimony, and decide whether that evidence convinces you that the assessed value is manifestly.
And until we, until we do that, we have nothing to talk about for now.
Right.
And, and we have to presume by law that the assessors, that the assessment is correct. And the applicant has to show us that it's manifestly wrong using some evidence.
But the problem is, not problem, the situation is that the applicant is going to tell us, is going to try and convince us what the true value of this property is. That as opposed to, he's not gonna tell us it's manifestly wrong. He's gonna tell us that it's terribly over assessed. True value is X amount, and if we buy into that, now we have to decide what the true value is. And my question is, is that do we use the same information that the applicant used in order for us to establish true value?
You have to decide if you are convinced by the information that the applicant presented, that they have demonstrated to you an alternative value that is, like, manifestly different than the town's.
Let me give you this scenario though. The assessment for a million dollars.
Yeah.
Apple comes in, Apple comes in and says, I can, I can prove to you that this is only worth five hundred thousand. And he convinces us that not so much it's worth five thousand, but whatever it's worth, it's, there's, it's manifestly wrong. Okay? So then when we come back and we say, well, we don't buy into your five hundred thousand, we do buy into seven hundred thousand based upon some of the information you gave us. So in other words, his five thou, his five hundred thousand led us to, to conclude that it was manifestly wrong, but we don't buy into the five thousands being just value. We, we then take all the information and determine that just value for ourselves.
Correct. And if you reach that determination, again, based on information that was presented, not the argument made, but the evidence presented to you. And if that number that you conclude is manifestly different from the assessment that you would grant an abatement in that amount, if you conclude that it's, use your example of the statutory ten percent, then I think you'd be compelled to say that's not a manifestly incorrect assessment.
And the only evidence that we have today is, and we're talking about this one. The only evidence we have is an appraisal that's three years. That's the only evidence.
Well, no, I, I think, I can't say that's true because if we, first of all, we accept that the, that the assessment.
Is correct.
Is correct, then it's up to the applicant to show what's wrong with it.
And he, he is.
And he, right. And then is it so wrong that it's manifestly?
Yeah, but his evidence isn't a praise. Everything else was subjective.
It's subjective in evidence.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you.
This is really supposed to be just a training session. We're, we're not supposed to be really deliberating on your.
Yeah, of course.
You know, we're just.
Well, we could deliberate if we so choose. That's why I didn't want to leave. I didn't, I didn't, I was afraid that it could be construed as deliberation.
Yeah. Sure, I really want some time. I guess this, it won't be. Okay. Can we let it go?
And I can, I can see a little bit about the recent.
Is that gonna be a lengthy conversation? Is I take, I take a recess if you want to do that right now?
Oh, no, I can talk to you anytime. Call you after we, if you were gonna break for lunch, I just talked to you now.
We are gonna break. We're gonna continue once more.
I'm gonna take a recess for a couple of minutes, Ed, if you want to sit down with Rebecca.
Alright.
Okay?
Thank you.
We're in recess, gentlemen. Okay, we'll call us back into session. Write your attention to agenda item thirteen, Commissioner's Business. This one is an update on main prayers rule change. Is that you, Rebecca?
Sure, yeah. So, um, this is just a follow-up to what we discussed before. There was the, um, it was a rule change. It was, um, basically employees who opted out of main prayers can now enroll in main prayers, can now join main prayers on a post-tax basis. If you want to adopt that into our plan. If you want to do that, we need to do it pretty quickly because, um, employees who have been here for five years, as of November first, only have until November first to make their election again.
Not post-tax. Is that like a Roth IRA? In other words, you don't have to pay taxes on your retirement if you?
So I, no, I don't, I, I can't answer that. I don't. I do know that the, this had to be changed on a, in, in statute, actually. This had to be a change in statute. And then it went to, and they, the change was such that it didn't conflict with federal taxes.
Of course, they've done it in other cases, double taxation. If you have to pay taxes on the money you earn, give it to the state retirement. They give it back, so you have to pay taxes again. Evidently, that's probably the case.
Well, it's amazing how many times the same dollar gets taxed.
So what do you need from us, Rebecca?
So what I need is for you to approve, um, that change and adopt that into our plan. And the main purse is very particular, um, about how these things happen. So the sample wording on the page, page two of that memo that I sent you, um, is really, uh, what that would require. So where it says, um.
I'm sorry, where were we in the meeting?
So in your meeting with your other commissioners, the first thing should be my memo and then page two of that is the sample wording. Yeah.
Okay, so this is your, your memo and.
Yeah, so if you started right under where it says the employer name agrees, if you simply say, move to adopt the provisions of blah, 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 and read that entire, um.
Page?
Mm-hmm.
Not the whole?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, everything except article approved is written. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Motion Maker.
Okay, so send word for reading, Governor.
You're gonna move the Hancock County.
Yeah.
Governing body to adopt. Governor, Hancock County's governing body. Oh, no.
When do we have to, I, I have discovered you down today?
No, but the sooner you do it, the sooner I can get, um, we can start communicating with employees and gathering, gathering their, um, enrollments, which have to be in by November first. So you can, you can go to the next meeting if you want to.
No, I, I, I'm just, I, I read this. I, I was just trying to get out of typing all this stuff in.
Thank you, Ed.
Well, I have it here.
Okay. So, but I just can't, I can't move as, as provided in this memo, so.
I'm gonna move to the.
Just a second. Oh, just a script, please. Uh, in, in item two, to authorize, what does he say there?
Um, well, uh, that is whoever you wish to sign, either the chair or Scott as the administrator probably would be appropriate.
Okay, so you understand that to, oh, that you would authorize the county administrator to sign the amendment agreement?
Yeah.
Get that okay?
Yeah.
Is there any other place like that before he stands, Rebecca?
I don't think so.
So he's going to stand there to see if Hancock, no.
No, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna move, I'm starting at one.
Yeah.
Move to adopt the provisions of five MRS section eight, one eight, two five two dash C, as enacted by PL twenty twenty one, chapter two eighty six, as allowed by main purse rule, chapter eight oh three, for its non-participating employees with optional membership who previously declined to participate in main purse eligible employees and to comply with the following requirements. To offer by November one, twenty twenty one, opportunity to join main purse prospectively to all its eligible employees who have been employed for five years or more, to advise these employees that, that this will be their only opportunity to join and to provide main purse with documentation of each eligible employee's election. And B, beginning in twenty twenty two, to annually offer eligible employees who have been employed for less than five years, and in twenty twenty two, eligible employees who have reached five years of employment between November one, twenty twenty one and November one, twenty twenty two, the opportunity to join main purse on a prospective basis during an open enrollment, join main purse on a prospective basis. Uh, I just repeated myself. I'm sorry. Uh, on a prospective basis during an open enrollment period from September first to November first, and to provide main purse with documentation of each election made by eligible employees under this provision. And C. And C, to withhold employee contributions for employees who join under this provision after all taxes have been withheld and to remit them main prayers as after-tax contributions. And two, to authorize the county administrator to sign the amended agreement between the employer, Hancock County, I should say, between Hancock County and the main, the main public employees' retirement system.
The only, I don't think that, that probably should say in one, Rebecca, they should say five MRS-A.
Well, this is how they sent it.
Yeah. Yeah, I almost said A, but it wasn't there.
With MS, I just wanted to get some misprint on that.
I don't think so.
No, they've done the same thing.
Yeah, often statute is quoted, it's just annotated, that's just what they, so that's just sometimes left off.
Oh, I just know.
It's still may or by statute.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing on all in favor of the motion, aye, aye, motion carries. Anything else, Rebecca, with that?
No, that's, that's all.
Do you have that language that I could cut paste or do you want just...
You don't need to do that, actually, I've got it right here and I'll, when I do the minutes, I'll plug it right in.
Okay.
So let's move, let's move on then to the vaccine mandate. That's getting closer and closer to the mandate, isn't it, kids?
Yeah, it is. Scott, do you want to speak to that?
Um, other than, the only thing I know is they're still waiting for a rule for OSHA to get down the federal rule.
Which then makes it mandatory once the OSHA rule comes down?
Yeah, well, yeah, so the state can do, the state can be more restrictive, but they have to do that at least now. Like on the radio, and I don't know, I haven't had a chance to look, I don't know where it's coming from, but there's now chatter of 50 to 100 being under the mandate.
And have you determined whether it's 50 full-time, I mean 100 full-time?
So, yeah, so the, the employee is, it's employee and I think, yeah, I believe it comes from, again, OSHA standards that basically determine an employee's, employee's, employee.
They don't give it back for double time?
Yeah, yeah.
So we clearly qualify, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, if, if that's how it's adopted, that's speculation at this point.
Correct.
It kind of makes sense that even, that any employee is going to qualify because they're in the workplace, whether they're part-time or full-time, there's still the same level of exposure.
But we're not above 100.
We are.
Oh.
Just full-time alone, we're, we're close enough that...
Okay, okay, that's right.
Yeah, and especially if you add two to the budget.
Like I was saying, is that number of actual people employed, it's a time or is it positions?
That's a good question, that's a great question. And as of what date, yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So interesting to SISIC, you know, it was a hospital that had 33% were not vaccinated. When they dropped the hammer the last day, now they were down to 1% were not vaccinated. So in other words, for all rhetoric, these people ran out, got vaccinated before the, before the expiration period. So I'm just, we don't have the figures here. We, you seem to believe that there's a low number of unvaccinated employees.
Well, that, that would be my guess. We don't have, we haven't inquired officially.
So when you envision happening, it has to show proof of vaccination, each employee would have to show proof.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's up to you whether you want to offer weekly testing as an alternative.
Yes.
But then there, there are lots of questions that come with that. Who's going to pay for, are we going to pay for employees to do it during work hours? You know, those, all those sorts of things.
I thought those were outlined in the legislation, that if we, if we did offer that as an alternative, we had to.
Yeah, I think most of that was under the emergency rule. I think there's still some questions determination is to, and I think a lot of that being left up to the individual employer.
You think that's still going to be an option with OSHA's rule?
I think not, I think OSHA will defer that to the employer to determine. I, I don't anticipate they would, in other words, say that the government would have to cover it. I don't know if I've heard anything.
Rebecca raised another interesting point the other day, guys, and that's how much authority do we have over elected officials? I'm hoping we don't have to address that.
Well, I'm wondering if there's going to be any action required on our part. It seems like it's going to come from above and I, you know, I think that unless the administrator's going to have to decide how to implement it, if he's got questions, then he'll come to us. I don't think there's going to be any action to do, is that...
I would think an elected official would still follow, and his policy would still follow, regardless of whether, I mean, you can't, just because you're elected doesn't...
It's the enforcement, that's the question.
Right, I think probably...
Clearly required, just like any other, but now you have...
Yeah, you can't terminate them per se, but if...
Right, so we're just hoping we don't have to address that, because that could be a significant... So there's no action needed today, it's just an update, we just have to wait and see.
Yeah, really just kind of get you thinking about how you want to handle it when it comes up.
Handle it just the way you tell us to. Okay, anything further, someone? Okay, we have a tax abatement, a next meeting. Have we set a date certain, a time certain for that?
I think I might have set that at 9:30 simply because following a quick meeting that, you know, following this meeting that I didn't anticipate a large agenda.
Yeah. So anyways, we'll see that on our, on our agenda.
Yeah.
And we don't have a binder on that one yet.
Oh, I thought you did, because it could slide by me.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Yeah, yeah, which I guess I need to, yeah, I need to take care of.
Well, it's unfortunate, that's pretty straightforward, why not?
Did you fix, did you fix yours?
I fixed mine.
Can you, can you hand me one that you fixed so that I can look at mine and see if we're on the same page and then...
Would you say, how was...
Well, again, I went, I, I didn't think it was the way it should have been and I had it changed, so I'm interested to see whether I'm interpreting it wrong.
Well, I mean, to start with the...
Yeah, 9:30.
The appraisal was in under the county correspondence, the...
Yeah, and that's where, I think that's where mine was as well.
Yeah, true. And the, the town's refusal was over under the applicant section. I mean, that's clearly, anyway. I'm not, I'm not telling you that mine's 100% right, Scott, but I did have to take it all out and put it in where I thought they should be.
Well, considering that you developed a listing, we've been doing okay so far. I have been, and I came across the same issues when I first looked at mine. I just need to do a better job at checking things.
Okay, the, I say among the agenda, Spirit of America. You know, bless Bruce Flaherty's hat, he's in the right place. He hasn't been through this, has he? Well, Rebecca explained it to him.
Well, so each, this is sort of a program where, I'm surprised you haven't done this because it happens to municipalities. Municipalities sort of nominate members of their community who fall under this Spirit of America criteria, which really has to do with volunteerism and that sort of thing, what they contribute to the community. And so sometimes counties will recognize those Spirit of America winners again, I guess. We did that a couple of years ago in a ceremony here. Bruce Flaherty, the man who pushes this or organizes this, I should say, is very enthusiastic about it and sends us correspondence frequently about it. So it's really up to you whether or not you want to recognize these.
Basically, what do we do? We, we...
We just write up certificates for them, they come to a county commissioners' meeting.
So if you look at the emails back and forth, oh, I have a, I have a historical society, one is Spirit of America down near Lethy. Rich Hotel, you're aware of all that?
So what I didn't understand is our role in this, Iowa, I guess I...
Well, it really isn't much, I mean, as Rebecca said, I guess we draw up, we basically are complimenting them for being selected by their community, right, Rebecca?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, we...
I mean, we're not, we have no official role in this other than to publicly recognize on, from our office, that these people won this in their communities. It's like, well, it's like hosting the Red Sox when they won the World Series. That's a wonderful idea, but it's our responsibility to host, and appreciate, especially...
Well, couldn't we just write a letter congratulating them?
That's, this, this is what Bruce does, I mean, he, he basically organizes these kinds of events to, so Bruce is saying, bring these people in publicly, thank them for their, their success, and we'd like to push up the signs. Seems like...
Pardon? Sounds like a waste of time.
It's pretty quick, it's kind of like, it doesn't take long, it doesn't take, I guess it takes more time to just type out the certificates than it is to give them out.
I think that most time it takes is the administrative work, preparing the certificates, getting them out to people, notifying them, getting them to come in, if they don't come in, mailing it to them afterwards.
It is quick.
It's quick here, but it's not...
Not quick, yeah.
So what's the question, the question?
The question is, do we want to continue to do this anymore?
Or at least this year. You could decide for this year if you want to recognize the 2021 recipients and then, you know, maybe...
Couldn't we recognize the 2021 recipients in a, as a group? I mean, I don't want to create a land of work for the county staff, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, you're suggesting we could send them all, sign a letter, congratulations, you know, that's the extent of county involvement. That's not too much work.
No, no, we just gather the recipients, write up a letter and bring them to you for signature.
It was one, two, three...
Was he expecting more than that?
Yeah, he was expecting a formal presentation at a meeting. At least that's how we've always done it. Looks to me like there's only one, two, three, four, five, six. You know, there's only six towns mentioned in the thing that, Rebecca, do you think that's only because only six towns even tried to do it all?
It could be, I'm not sure. He has this elaborate spreadsheet that you have to create an account to go into access and so, so I'd have to go in there to make, to determine who actually got...
You think there's more than six that he listed in the...
Maybe, I don't know why he just listed the six, it's a...
Do, I feel that usually we see, I was supposed to say, that's, we usually see more than three.
Yeah, there's usually a lot of, and they usually do something.
So it sounds to me like there's only certain communities that even get involved in this.
I think so.
Well, it's...
And if there's only six, Paul, then there's six out of 33 in the, it's 27 that don't, that don't get involved.
But like, yeah, but like here, they want the community in the county to not, to have all the same money? These people aren't going to want to do that.
Well, probably, it probably will.
Have they in the past?
Not for us.
Well, I think we had them come in and...
Were the municipal officials?
Didn't we do that?
Municipal officials came?
No, 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 I'm sorry, just the recipients.
Oh, no, the recipients came, but Paul was saying, does the town have some kind of a welcome or congratulations? I suspect they would be awarding the...
I have never seen this.
That was, I was in town, how long have we been doing this?
15 years and I never saw this.
Yeah, I'd say three or four years.
Three or four years that, that one started?
I don't know when it started.
How long did you get out?
Two years.
Well, I don't know how, I don't know where these people came from in the past, I mean, obviously you can tell, but I don't know if anybody from Maryland before. Do you remember though? What's going there? Well, I don't think it needs a motion, but my general consensus, gentlemen, why don't we say that this is probably not a good year for these kind of activities that means the staff will draw up a congratulations letter, submit to your line for all of us, we'll sign those, send them to one, okay, that's what we're going to do, Rebecca. Some, some point, look for...
I move to adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.